Mr. Kupora, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have a moment of silence? Thank you. Ms. Shafnisky, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Kupora?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Gaffredo?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Ms. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, could I please have a motion to approve the minutes from October 24th, 2024, and October 23rd, 2024 budget hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. Next, we have courtesy of the floor. I have one person who has signed up. You will get five minutes to speak, no more. Please state your city of residence when you come to the front. And I have Joshua Jemangal, is that correct? Did I mangle the name?
I didn't know that. Oh, that was for that.
He thought he had to give attendance.
I thought everyone would sign that.
Do you want to talk for five minutes about anything? You got the floor? Thank you for being here.
Very excited about the process.
We're excited, thank you.
Yeah, give it 15 minutes.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor who didn't sign in? Thank you. Okay, let's see. Mr. McClure, do you have a report?
So there's been some news. Currently, on Blue Mountain, 600 acres have burned. The fire is 50% contained. The fire is limited to, at this time, and hopefully for good, state game lands. And DCNR is now entirely responsible for the extinguishing of the fire. But I wanted to take a moment here in public to thank all of the fire companies that responded. Berks County, Kempton Fire Company, Carbon County, Ashakola Fire Company, Bowmanstown Volunteer Fire Company, East Penn Township Fire Company, Franklin Township Volunteer Fire Company, Lehightown Fire Department, Palmerton Fire Company, Perryville Volunteer Company Number Two, and Penn Forest Township Volunteer Fire Company Number One. We thank our friends in Carbon County. Lehigh County, Copley Fire Department, Star Hose Fire Company, Greenawald Fire Company, Lori Station Fire Company, New Tripoli Fire Company, Eastern Salisbury Fire Company, Schnecksville, Sladington Fire Department, TriClover, Upper Salkin Fire Department, Vera Cruz Fire Department, Whitehall Borough Fire, and Lehigh County Drone Team. We thank our friends in Lehigh County. Monroe County, Polk Township Volunteer Fire Company. Thank you, Monroe County. From our hometowns. Northampton County Emergency Management, Freemansburg Fire Company, Heller Town Fire Company, Nancy Run Fire Company, Hanover Township Fire Company, Lower Salkin Township Fire Company, Bethlehem Township Fire Company, Tatumie Fire Company, Forks Township Fire Company, Lower Mount Bethel Township Fire Company, Palmer Township Fire Company, Williams Township Fire Company, Banger Fire Company, Portland Fire Company, Wind Gap Fire Company, Plainfield Township Fire Company, Upper Mount Bethel Township Fire Company, North Banger Fire Company, Bath Fire Company, North Hampton Fire Company, Walnut Port Fire Company, Allen Township Fire Company, East Allen Township Fire Company, Lehigh Township Fire Company, Moore Township Fire Company, Nazareth Fire Company, Bushkill Township Fire Company, Upper Nazareth Fire Company, Suburban EMS, North Hampton Regional EMS, Lehigh Township Police, St. Luke's Health Network, Lehigh Valley Health Network, Lehigh Township Public Works, DCNR and Penn Doc. We thank them all for responding to this tremendous blaze that could have been so much more dangerous than it has turned out to be. And unfortunately, tomorrow, we have another red flag warning. It's very dangerous. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. I was corresponding with a friend of mine from high school who lived very close to it and indicated that, you know, the county was going to be able to do whatever it could if they needed anything. Do we know if the residents up in that area, if anybody needs any resources? I know DCNR now, at this point, is going to be handling it and in charge of things, but do we know if anybody needs resources?
Fortunately, fortunately, at this time, no.
Okay, okay. That's good. That's good news. Thank you.
So, in other news, we had a national election. And although it did not turn out the way I would have liked it to turn out, it was, in Northampton County, legal, fair, and accurate once again. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot of what happened on Election Day. On Election Day, we had 235,275 registered voters. Of those, 175,621 showed up. That was for a 75% turnout rate. So, very good. We had less than 40% turnout in five locations. So in five locations of our 154 precincts, we had less than 40% turnout. In 11 locations, we had 50% to 60% turnout. In 17 locations, we had 60% to 70% turnout. And if you're interested, we can provide you with all of these. In 53 locations, 53 of our precincts, we had 70% to 80% turnout in 53 of our precincts. So, we had... This is astonishing to me. In 68 of our locations, we had over 80% turnout. That's just amazing and overwhelming and incredible and such a statement of our citizens' commitment to democracy and a true statement to everyone who put the elections on. I just want to say how thankful I am to everyone who worked on putting the elections on. And I am not articulate enough to express to you, County Council, the effort that people put in to making this election a legal, fair, and accurate election in Northampton County. And I want to start first where we started one or two elections ago with ESNS. They did just fine. And they were very supportive of us through this process. They had the texts here that we needed them to have, and they did just fine. And the machines, for the most part, did just fine. So we were very pleased with ESNS. I have to thank all of our election workers, the people who are employed full-time in the Elections Division. They did a tremendous job. I am so grateful to them. They have worked essentially around the clock for a month. They have been here constantly, and they have my eternal gratitude. The part-time Elections Division workers were here. Many of these folks are retirees, and they have been putting in tremendous hours. And we couldn't do this without them. All of the volunteers that have come forward to help us. And after Act 77, we now have to have a whole-of-government response to voting. Because we have same-day voting, we have now an explosion in ballot-on-demand. We had over 7,000 people vote ballot-on-demand when we only had a few hundred in 2020. And of course, our mail-in ballots, which were about 65,000. We need now, not just the Elections Division, we need the Sheriff's Department. We need operations and maintenance. And I thank the deputies for all of the work the sheriff's deputies did on this election. We could not have done it without them. The operations and maintenance people, our O&M guys, were driving back and forth, not only in the three days before the election, but on Election Day, getting machines moved around to make sure we had all the assets in place. The operations and maintenance people were just tremendous. Our EM people, Emergency Management, made sure that they were supportive of our operations all night long and got everything in efficiently. And I think we were done completely counting by about 2:00 a.m., which is what we predicted we would be, and we were very proud of that. So many people throughout the county, employees, whether they worked in the Criminal Division or in the Department of Human Services, they came to elections to assist us in putting this on. And I thank every single county employee who worked on this election to make this as successful as it was here in Northampton County. Do you have any questions?
Sure.
Were there any? Were there any incidents at any polling place in terms of somebody, you know, harassing anybody?
So, you know, we heard...
Especially your workers.
We heard anecdotally about some stuff, but I wouldn't say anything that disrupted any of anybody's ability and right to vote.
And also, the employee... Not the employees, but the election staff, the people, judges of elections, and the others, nothing?
No, so the vast majority of judges of elections and poll workers and machine operators did a fantastic job on Election Day. And I have not... It has not been conveyed to me that any of them had any complaints of harassment directed toward them.
Good. And also, when certification?
I think it has to be done by the 19th... Nicole, do you know? It has to be done by the 19th.
Okay. And will be prepared... I remember, was it... Which election was it? People were coming in and jamming in?
Yeah, we have...
Everything set up?
We have the logistics in place for the canvas, which begins tomorrow, I believe, at 9:00 a.m. We're ready.
Good. Thanks.
To conduct the official count. Because everything's unofficial right now.
Quick, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Warren.
I remember about three weeks ago, you said that you thought we were going to be over about 5,000 in terms of on-demand voting, 5,000 individuals, and it was over 7,000.
It was over 7,000.
I have to also commend the Elections Office, the workers, for the time that they spent. This county was under a national microscope. And the fact that they were able to do this, not just over the course of these past few weeks, but these past few months, this entire election cycle, there is something to be said for that. I want to thank everybody in our Elections Office for their professionalism, for making the process itself seamless. I can't tell you how many folks I talked to, both Democrats and Republicans, people who are independents, who went to vote on-demand, and they said it was a seamless process. You know, they had to wait a little bit last week in some lines, but they said it was a seamless process. It was easy. There were no hiccups. So I just want to commend our Elections Office and the staff and the folks that were... They're working tirelessly around the clock.
Well, it was only seamless because you had people like someone who was in front of you yesterday on her budget, the chief public defender volunteering to work in the Elections Office. I mean, it was a whole-of-government effort.
The staff killed it. They're awesome.
And I gave you a list of people before who we wanted to thank. Our parks employees were out here helping us. I mean, it's just amazing. And let me just say again, the judges of elections and the poll workers and the machine operators, we can't thank them enough for putting this election on.
Killed it. They're awesome. Yeah.
80% turnout, and how many? I mean, that's just unheard of. That's 68 locations, over 80% turnout. It's amazing.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. McClure? Thank you.
Finally, I have one last thing. The red flag warning for tomorrow. We had a red flag warning right before this conflagration on Blue Mountain broke out. The first, as I think we all know and appreciate, the first role of any government is public safety. And to that end, I received this letter dated October 18th. Dear Mr. McClure, The Northampton County Association of Fire Chiefs would like to lend its voice of support for the effort to expand the county's Motorola Astro P-25 advanced communication system. The use of county bond funds to install P-25 equipment on five additional existing tower sites will both enhance the radio coverage for our members and provide the needed advanced technology necessary for communicating during emergencies. Additionally, the use of bond funds will also expedite the transition from the existing system to the more dependable P-25 radio network. To elaborate, the expanded system will provide secure, wide-area communication and enable seamless collaboration between all county emergency service organizations. It will also be a beacon of reliability, eliminating the interference inherent on the current communication system, thus ensuring unwavering support when every moment counts. In short, the new radio system and expansion are more than just upgrades in technology. They are a pivotal enhancement on our capability to ensure public safety. They will allow us to respond more swiftly and effectively to emergencies, ensuring a safer environment for our residents. Furthermore, we would like to extend our support for the continuation of the Northampton Public Safety Grant Program. Using bond funds will assist public safety grant agencies benefiting from the grant program while freeing general tax revenues for other purposes. In closing, the association fully supports your efforts to fund the P-25 system expansion with bond proceeds. And we also wish to extend our thanks and appreciation for allocating the funds on the most recent upgrades to the radio system in the southern region of the county. Respectfully, Joshua Peters, President, Northampton County Fire Chiefs Association. That concludes my report. Madam President.
Thank you, sir. Next, we move into old business. Tonight, we have a public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Council of the County of Northampton, Northampton County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the incurring of non-electual debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $63,500,000, covenating to pay and pledging all of the available taxing power of the local government unit for the payment of the bonds, providing for the establishment of a sinking fund and appointing a sinking fund depository, fixing the form, maximum interest rates, maturity dates, and other provisions for the payment thereof, authorizing the acceptance of a proposal for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing a filing of required documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, ratifying and directing certain actions of officers, and making certain other covenants and provisions in respect of the bonds." Mistress Kraft and Warren introduced this ordinance at October 24, 2024 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this issue?
Good evening, members of council. Steve Barron, Director of Fiscal Affairs, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. You've heard me speak about this issue before. And I believe I've said to you that we will not have to raise taxes in the near future to borrow the $63 million. And I say that with confidence because we are going to be refinancing a rather costly lease we had to get into. Now, at the time, that lease was very prudent because of the amount of money we were borrowing, the speed in which we needed to acquire the goods, i.e. the chiller for the Juvenile Justice Center, and the cost of going out for a bond. Now that we have the P-25, now that we have to... We're looking at refinancing this lease, the obvious needs of the parking deck and the space demands you're about to hear about in a little while, it's very clear that we do need to borrow this money. We do need to get these projects done, and this will be the quickest and most expedient way to do so. And the reason I say we don't have to raise taxes for it is quite simple. We are going to be taking approximately $1 million from our budget that is currently paying the lease. It will take care of any additional debt service. Not to mention, this year alone, we have an additional $2.5 million of warehouses, tax revenue, that has come on the books from warehouses. I like to call it the warehouse surcharge, so to speak. When warehouses do come in, and we try to keep it as, you know, limited as possible with our zoning, when they do come onboard, one of the things they do is provide us revenue. And that has caused our revenue to go up each and every year. And we usually bring on anywhere from $1 million to $2 million a year in warehouse revenue. And that will easily pay for these bonds over the course of several years. I don't believe any county executive in the future, and the current county executive, will have to raise taxes to pay for these bonds. So, I have Garrett Moore here from PFM. You've heard him before. As you go over the exhibits, the ordinance, anything that you have questions on related to the mechanics of a bond, Mr. Moore will gladly answer any of your questions from PFM. So if you'd like to hear from him now or during the course of your debate, he will be here until the public hearing is closed and vote is taken.
Madam President, since he's standing here, can I ask him a question? I know we're going to have the public...
Mr. Barron or the gentleman? Yes. Yes, sir.
$2.5 million... $2.5 million for the warehouses. But also, that doesn't even take into account the income from all these, from the landlords. I mean, we have apartments going up left, right, and every square foot, almost, of available land. I know Bethlehem is sold out and pretty much anywhere in between.
I will say this. We are putting more taxable properties on the rolls each and every day. I've broken down to warehouses, but yes, they have the new apartments. If you drive just on Freemansburg Avenue, I believe they're the Bordeaux Lofts, I think. That apartment complex generates a huge amount of revenue. There's a whole other extension in addition to Wagner Farms. So there are several property developments that are going in. Not to mention, you know, our affordable housing project that will happen in Forks. That is going to be, you know, probably approximately 50 units. And while that is being built by Habitat for Humanity, those properties are assessed and they pay taxes. So even the county is trying to bring on, you know, more property and affordable property, which, you know, again, goes into that investment we're making in the community.
And just as a tax reference, I mean, between where you live and I, and getting here, the William Penn Highway, for example, between those two points, I think it's going to be over 1,000 apartments once all of this washes out over the course of the next year or so. So you're going to have... I mean, I agree with you. That's my point, is we're going to see tax revenues... Of course, there's accompanying problems, but the other side of it is tax revenues are going to be fairly healthy if we are careful with how we spend.
And Mr. Valani has just built some lovely apartments right off of Henderson Place, Mr. Heckman. I'm sure you see them when you drive to Gator Street like I do.
I'll keep that in mind, sir.
But Garrett Moore is here if you have any other questions. I'm sorry.
Do you have a question for Mr. Barron?
Mr. Barron might comment on it, but this is more for Mr. Heckman. Our taxes make up one-fifth of all of our expenditures. So I get it. We have warehouse surplus of $1 million, $2 million, but we spend $500 million a year, and our tax is bringing $100 million a year.
Most of the money...
We need intergovernmental income and resources to make sure that we can pay our bills every year. If for some reason that money ever slowed, because we're in a massive amount of debt at higher governmental levels, then we would have to find ways real quickly to trim our budgets.
May I say something in response?
Since he's...
Since...
Yes, this is our time to debate together, but...
I don't know if you want to hand it...
My comment was going to be that much of our money, while it is only 10% of our expenditures, yes, we get $100,000 or $100 million, I apologize, in tax revenue approximately. Most of the additional $400 million that we manage is attached to programs. It comes in through intergovernmental money. And when that money disappears and changes... It's been very dynamic over the last 15 years I've been here. Mr. Heckman can tell you it's mostly human services. He was the director of human services. I guarantee he would have a big learning curve since he's been out for so long, no offense, Mr. Heckman, with the way human services has changed and the way services are delivered. Now, I know he keeps up on some of that as a county council member, but when those... My point here is, is when those programs evolve, when we change from the base pay to block grants, for example, the money change, and now the money is able to be moved in different ways. So while those programs change, the mandates on that money also changes. Now, the county has an ordinance specifically. We do not put in any more than is required to draw down the maximums. County Council made that a law. So yes, our budget may change, but it is not incumbent upon us to put any more money in than the mandates that we can draw down. County Council's been very clear about that. Unless they repeal that ordinance, I'm not allowed to present you a budget that puts more than that in, and I never have. So I want that to... Just so council knows that, to answer your question.
Okay, I agree with basically what he said. I'm sure there's a lot of things that have changed, and he's right about block grants. That was something that's happened over the years, too. But I would say this to you, in all honesty, and not trying to hype anything. If in fact, the... If in fact, we started losing that intergovernmental income, we would probably not be able to provide the services regardless of the law. And the state... Every county, every county would be in the same bind, because it wouldn't just be for us. It would be for all the 60-plus counties. And I mean, it's impossible... I can only stress how impossible it would be for this county, especially with all the development. I mentioned apartments. That's always going to put a strain on us. I mean, that's going to put a strain on services. That's going to put... It's not just... So there's going to be people. It's going to be mental health. It's going to be drug and alcohol. So there's going to be even an increased probable need for those services, social services. And without the intergovernmental... It's hard for me, because I get it. I hear what you're saying. And you're right. Our real estate taxes, if you look at our budget, it's huge. And then the real estate taxes are this part of it. But the intergovernmental makes up such a huge part. I don't know how we'd even begin to backfill. Like, there are certain times when you might say, we'd like to put more money into a preventative service, let's say in children and youth, that we don't have to... We don't get money back on at a 90-10 or something like that. But it's never been to the point where it's been more than just an auxiliary service. If we had to get into our fundamental services, I don't know, whether it be Mr. McClure, whether it been Mr. Brown, whoever the future executive is, he or she, whoever, they're going to put up a red flag or a white flag, and all the other county commissioners will be doing the same, because it would almost be impossible to run the county government. And that's all I'm saying. I agree with you.
I agree with you.
When we get into debt, you've got to look at it very carefully, very closely. But I just wanted to say that, yeah, that people... I've said that for many, many years, what you said, that our real estate tax... Because when you look at it, I think when you look at county, school, municipal, county's usually the runt of the litter. I don't know if that's appropriate to say anymore, but... Our taxes are never that terrible to begin with. So I mean, I don't know what we would do, frankly. I don't know what any county would do. But that's all I just wanted to throw in. I agree with you, the generals. Yeah.
Any other discussion or questions regarding this ordinance?
Discussion on the ordinance.
Mr....
This is still public comment, aren't we?
A public comment, yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Anyone from the public that wants to? I got lost because we started debating. Mr. Emili?
Good evening, council. Mike Emili, Public Works Director, Nazareth, Pennsylvania.
Oh, there's some coming that way.
So I just wanted to go over some of the points that we've discussed at previous meetings regarding the necessity, not only for a new parking deck, but also for a new office building. So about a year ago, we hired USA Architects to perform a concept plan to see what would be feasible with the existing site constraints that we have. And what you see here is what we came up with. The parking deck would sit in the same footprint, essentially, of the existing parking deck. And we would be looking to situate a three-story office building, roughly 31,000 square feet, at the southeast corner of Washington Street and South Union Street. So the parking deck was originally constructed in 1975. So next year will now mark 50 years that this parking deck has been in service. Every estimate for expected life of a pre-cast concrete parking deck indicates you can expect 35 to 40 years. So we're already going on 10 years past the best estimate of what we could have expected. Way back in 2008, a study was conducted that concluded the county should immediately pursue the design and construction of a new parking deck. At the time, they had looked into the feasibility of adding additional levels to the existing parking deck. And what they determined was it was not allowable by current code. It does not meet the current seismic requirements for the building code. It does not meet the current seismic requirements for the building code. They also found that the structure was not designed in accordance to the engineered plans. When they started looking into the footings of the structure, they found that there weren't any in certain spots. It was just bearing directly on the rock. In order to make it structurally sound, to add additional levels, a great number of additional columns would need to be constructed. Back in 2008, they estimated that would be about 6.1 million. Adjusted for inflation, that's about $9 million to add parking capacity to the existing structure. And just last week, one of our custodians was doing their rounds through the parking deck, and they discovered this loose chunk of concrete that had recently fallen. This much larger chunk is one that I came before council about a year or so ago. This one would hurt if it fell on you. This one would likely kill you if it were to fall directly on you. It is unlikely that that would happen, but it is not outside the realm of possibility. We've already conducted numerous repair projects on the parking deck. In 2010, they installed a new topping slab over the precast tees that were in place. They immediately experienced issues with it leaking through the joints. We had litigation over that project. Back in 2016, they installed a new membrane on top of it, as well as other very minor repairs. We essentially did the same work last year, replacing the traffic membrane on the ramps and other very minor repairs. So at this point, we've, we've done all the low-hanging fruit that we can on this parking deck to keep it in service. We've sealed the joints. We've, we've replaced the wearing surface on it. But the bones of this parking deck, the columns, the concrete, the reinforcement, they are all original. They date back 50 years at this point. Since 2002, we've had four different engineering firms look at this parking deck, and they are all coming up to the same conclusion that the county needs to plan for a replacement. Just to summarize the parking deck, it's over 50 years old next year. If we were to construct a new one, it would have a more efficient layout that would allow for increased capacity. The concept plan that USA Architects and their subconsultant came up, without about 50 spots, parking capacity on the same footprint. And we also have to think about what a contingency plan would look like in case we had to close the parking deck with little to no notice. The vast majority of our ADA parking spots for our employees and visitors are located on the top level of the parking deck. If we had to relocate that to the lot across the street, it would be a significant inconvenience for them to get to the building safely. And if we were to construct the garage in a new office building simultaneously, it would just allow for seamless integration between the two. The elevators can connect directly from the parking deck into the new building. We wouldn't have to be working or worry about constructing a new building adjacent to an active parking deck. We would have a much larger footprint to construct everything simultaneously. It would just, it would, it would make a lot more sense and would cost less in the long run to do the two simultaneously. As for the building itself, we've talked extensively about how our elections division is operating out of four different locations currently. They have an office on the lower level, an office on the first floor. They conduct the counting in the cafeteria, as well as our elections warehouse. This new building, they would have an entire first floor dedicated to centralizing their operations. We would also free up space in the human services building by moving the Community and Economic Development Department out here. I know Director Wondolowski is going to be presenting later. She has some, some pictures showing some of the current working conditions and the, the rooms and closets that we've since converted into office space. Controller Zarinsky was here recently talking about the issues with her building. It is not accessible. It's poorly configured and it's in poor condition. And a new building would also free up space here at the Government Center for the DA's office, which is bursting at the seams. Summarize the funding. The bond ordinance is obviously for 63 and a half million. The cost estimate that Skanska had prepared was a little over 43 million. Steve had talked earlier about refinancing the 2021 Giza project, and that would leave about 14 and a half million in a remaining contingency that could be used for various capital projects. We heard about the, the P-25 upgrade that would be desperately needed for emergency management. There's also a green energy component that we could potentially add to this project, as well as a number of capital projects at the jail. So Skanska had estimated that it would cost a little over $6 million to add steel framing and a solar canopy over the top level of the parking deck. This would have a number of benefits for us. It would offset at least a quarter of the electrical usage we have at the Government Center. It would also extend the life of the parking deck by limiting the snow removal and the de-icing salts that our parks department have to use every, every snowstorm. And we'd also potentially be eligible for 30% to 50% federal reimbursement through the new elective pay program that the Treasury Department is rolling out. So we could significantly subsidize this investment in green energy that would quickly pay itself off in the reduced energy consumption. And some of those jail capital improvements, we've talked before about rooftop replacements on the newer section of the prison. We have nine rooftop units approaching 20 years, 20 years old at this point that require constant maintenance. Roof replacement is a constant need at the jail. The boilers and the hot water heaters could be replaced. They're not suitably sized currently for the demand over there. They run out of hot water often, and replacing them with new hot water heaters could reduce the reliance on steam and lower the energy consumption. We also have an exterior perimeter of the wall that is deteriorating. It's going to need significant repairs in the near future. And lastly, we've discussed in the past the option of renting office space versus building new office space. And one of the key constraints that we run into is the elections office has to stay in the county seat here in Easton. So I know there's, there's been discussion about possible space in Lower Nazareth, but that would really restrict one of the, the largest benefits of why we need this new building. It has to stay in Easton. The rental costs that we're seeing generally are between $15 to $20 per square foot annually. So to rent a comparable amount of square footage, we'd be roughly paying half a million dollars in the, the first year alone, and that number's just going to continue to escalate from there. The cost to construct the new core and shell of the office building that's proposed was estimated to be a little over $12 million by Skanska. So the break-even point versus renting space, you would, you would hit that break-even point in 16 to 20 years, depending on what that starting rent is. And any kind of rented space would require substantial renovations in terms of reconfiguring office space, HVAC, electrical, in order to fit the county's needs. So any kind of fit-out cost between the new building and renting would virtually be a wash.
Did you have a question?
Any questions?
Mr. Kapoor.
Do you have an estimated cost on the P-25 system? Thank you.
No questions for Mr. Emili?
I don't know if it's for you. The 14.4 remaining contingency was, and you've answered a lot of that, was one thing that was been rolling in my mind as I've completely reviewed everything that we've gotten from day one. And whenever there's a pool of money unassigned, as a legislator, I get nervous. But, but you, you, you laid out some plans, which I agree with for the most part. Also, and I don't want to make this sound self-serving, but because this is, all of this is not just today. It's going down the future road. Some of that money, if necessary, could be utilized, and that would probably be $100,000. If, if even that, probably $50,000 of 14.4 million to actually upgrade Northampton County Council's communication system with Zoom. Well, it's, I've been waiting for seven years. So the thing is, right? Could not be, I mean, the upgrade. Mr. Barron doesn't think it's necessary, but believe me, if a township can do it, the county of Northampton can do it, as long as it's a big building. And so I would, I would hope that, that 14.4 million, glad you have ideas for most of it, but that does allow us to look at different things that may be necessary today and maybe moving forward.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, that's all. Basic, that's all I had for him. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Emili? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to public comment?
Still unheard. I'm Nicole Peterzak, the Director of Administration. I live in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, and I oversee the elections division. So the current configuration of the elections office is, is not simply poor. It's, it's, it's an absurdity. I think everyone saw the crowds of people that were here for Ballot on Demand last week before Election Day. And if, if you weren't here, we had hundreds of people in the last week of Ballot on Demand. And on one of the last days, we had in one day over 1,100 voters come through the elections office to vote. And there were people lining the hallway on either side, two to three people deep, all the way down to the end of the hallway, around to the cafeteria. And this is a substantial change from 2020. In 2020, we maybe had a few hundred votes, and this year, we processed over 7,000. For a third-class county, this is just unacceptable. We, we need to provide our employees and our residents with services that are not only efficient but safe, and the conditions leading up to Election Day were neither.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone else?
Good evening, council. Todd Weaver, Director for Northampton County Emergency Management, Pinarjil, Pennsylvania. I appreciate you putting the P-25 project in, into this bond issue in light of our recent incident of the 600-acre fire. This type of communication system, at least in that portion of the county, would have been beneficial. Our current system we have, which we refer to as a legacy system, was pretty much installed and completed 20 years ago, and it's maintained and still is maintained. It is an analog system. It is subject to interference because we use T-band frequencies, which are shared with the TV channels. So in the fall and the spring, we end up with temperature inversions, as they call it. And we actually get ducting from a TV station in Virginia and elsewhere that actually swamps our receivers where we can't hear emergency responders on portable radios, and sometimes they have to go to mobiles. So that's one of the reasons why we asked to see if we can get this project moved a little bit quicker on the P-25. But the incident up in Lehigh Township, a lot of our frequencies, as some of you may or may not know, are regional or tower sites in those geographic areas. So we have a Tac 1 through 6. Up in that area is Tac 5. It's out of the seminary site, and that is a single-site tower, and it works within that region. So responders that are coming from Bangor can't mark responding or communicate with those units because that tower is regional. We do have some countywide channels that cover our Ops 1 or Ops 2. They're kind of a north and a south in cover, but they, again, they are limited because of the conventional system. The other limitation of our current system is the FCC last year put out a moratorium on any expansion of the P-25 because they want to re-auction it back off to TV stations. So that's why I'm here kind of to explain a little bit where we are with the P-25. And in 2019, we acquired the city of Bethlehem infrastructure, and we purchased the P-25 system with county tax dollars, with the intent of expanding that benefit into the rest of the county. 2022, council was gracious and, and gave us $5 million in the ARP fund to start expanding that P-25 project. And it is getting close to completion. Hopefully, the first quarter of next year, we'll actually start having some units on that. But that covers the 2278 corridor. So with that amount of funds, we figured we'd, we'd hit the most populous area and do it with the police departments. So with that said, we, we have that project going on. We've applied for congressional grants. We were able to get one to help improve a site. That is a two-year process, and we'll probably be starting that hopefully shortly to add another tower site to our infrastructure. But with a P-25 trunk system, it's called what we call simulcast. And when you go trunk, it groups all the frequencies together, but allows you to create what we call talk groups. And you can create 100 talk groups, 50 talk groups. It's kind of configurable, but it makes those channels equal throughout the whole county. So if I'm talking on, I'll call like our Tac 5 out there, that Tac 5 will work anywhere in the county. For example, South PD on the new infrastructure that we have, which is surround city of Bethlehem, Lower Salk, and Heller Town, I can actually listen to it in Pinarjil Borough, clear as day, as if I'm there with those officers. If I switch over to the conventional system, which we have patched currently, I can't hear it from there. So that is a benefit on the P-25. The other part is actually securing the communications. By securing the communications, any radio actually is authorized. It's basically a computerized radio system. The radio has to authenticate. It needs permission to put on, get onto the system. If we have an issue with the radio, we can actually disable it. Some other benefits is we pass data on the radios. We actually get GPS location on those radios that are enabled. So the officers, fire departments or apparatus, we will actually see them on the map of where they are and where they're moving out, so we can get those resources closest or, if they need help, of where they're at. Other parts of it, it secures the network. And remember, I told, talked about the radio, you know, needs permission to be on the system. Right now, on any type of analog system, you can have a rogue system program your frequencies. They're readily available public record on the FCC, and they can actually, for instance, have an open mic and an open carrier that would actually cause issues with us and block communications. And that's throughout the US when you run an analog system. Digital system can, can take care of that because if it is a rogue radio that doesn't belong, it can actually be bounced. With moving to the P-25, we're also moving to what we call 800 megahertz. It allows more in-building coverage, but it also is not as susceptible to interference as a P-25. And the 800 is earmarked and the 700 for public safety. So they don't put the general business channels or TV channels. That's why they kind of are moving those TV channels back to the, back into the 500 T-band spectrum of where we're at. Part of what you saw, heard was the letter from Josh Peters, the President of Fire Chiefs Association. And we meet monthly with them and quarterly with their leadership. And they wanted to know what they could do to help support to move it on. And I asked them for the letter of support, which is actually great from that organization. And part of it is, is they want to start transitioning sooner. So right now, as you see with a lot of the grants, departments are buying radios that are P-25 capable. But on the analog system, they can't take advantage of those features that they paid for until they go on. And to transition just half of the fire and EMS over to P-25, that means the northern half, because we're, we're building south-north just because of infrastructure and population, they can't take advantage of that or communicate back and forth, and we have to put cross-patches. So the longer we keep those cross-patches in place, we will have to pay to maintain two separate infrastructures. So as we get them to transition sooner, we can decrease rental at our tower sites because we're using the infrastructure, and we can also then decrease the equipment and the channels that we have up and eventually abandon the, the 500 megahertz. Other things is when departments apply for federal grants, and we apply for federal grants, you are required to build it to the P-25 public safety standard. And that's what we are currently building out, and that's what departments and radios, so they have no choice, even if they're on an analog system, have to buy a P-25 radio. So we want to take advantage of those features that are part of the public safety system. And just also to note, I, we were here all day long, all night long, even after the, the fire with the election assisting. And I kind of just made an operation, an observation in the election office itself. And, you know, we were embedded during the primary. We were embedded during this election. And, you know, you kind of look at your election office as running as an emergency operations center like we run at the county 911 center, the emergency operations center. It kind of runs there, and you do need the space to expand and contract. Yes, I hope I don't have to use my emergency operations center. That's why I dual-purpose it as a training, but I need to have the space to do it. And there was about 20 to 30 people in that election office, not only call center, answering phones, but also emergency management embedded, solicitors in and out, S&amp;S. You, you need to have the space to, to run efficiently and actually hear the call center. I think they answered about 1,000 calls in that amount of time. For us at the 911 center, that's a busy day. And in close proximity, you need the space and the privacy because a lot of what I'm overhearing is they're talking to one of the constituents, and they're overhearing other conversations that are going on, and they're asking to repeat. So it, it does create a little bit of efficiency in that space. It was just one of those observations in emergency management. It was just one of those observations in emergency management, like, you know, this is running like an emergency operations center. Basically, it becomes that during the election time. So, thank you for the time.
Mr. Kapoor.
Yeah, I'm sorry. $6 million. Yep.
Yes, sir.
First, thank you again for all you guys in Blue Mountain. I know it's with this drought. It's dicey, and I spent a lot of time up in that area. And I stuck some relatives that live up that way. And you mentioned about the development too. You know, the houses have encroached and encroached.
Yep.
It gets pretty close. And fortunately, where it happened, there were any, thank God, buildings there.
Yes, fortunately, I think when nightfall, the wind had a shifting up the mountain. And by that time, they were able to cut a line along the houses and keep that structure.
I got a couple of questions for you, but don't get too technical on me.
I'll try not to.
It's been many decades since.
I try not to.
I proudly got my electronics technician diploma from Lincoln Technical Institute. But that was a long time ago, and I don't think people even use wires anymore. So, here's the thing. I remember when the 911 system was going in. Your dad would remember that well. And one of the concerns was just this communication. Everybody had something different, and who knows? It was very difficult. And it was very territorial.
Yes.
As I know you know. And I knew, when it came especially to the fire department, we've come a long way since then. I know when we put 911 in, that was one of the biggest issues, was to get everybody on the same page with communication, the big thing. Are we, our communication abilities, and I heard everything you said, but I just wondered, are we, other than the analog, we're still on analog in many cases. When you had this, which was a real good example, this fire on the mountain, and you had to communicate, you said there were some issues. What about inter-county? In other words, you said there was a problem with Bangor and communication-wise. And I know even when we did 911, and I don't have to tell my good friend, Mr. Giovanni, but, you know, there were problems because of the terrain and also sometimes the signal.
We're always geographically challenged in Northampton County.
Yes, yes.
So, that is always a challenge with the sites, and that's why we need the number. We actually went through and tried to figure out if we could eliminate some with putting it in the trunk. And unfortunately, up north, the topography is challenging. When it comes to in-county communications, a lot of our frequencies, we're licensed at the sites we are by the FCC.
Right.
And right now, there's a moratorium. So, I can't create that, what we call the Attack 5 channel up in that northwest area to cover the entire county. Instead, that department, by the time it travels and gets within the coverage of the site, then it can communicate. But at that time, they're communicating to us on another channel. So, now, we're kind of splitting that dispatcher's ear, you know, between two channels.
Yeah.
So, as far as, that's where it creates some seamless communications within the county. As you know, in the past, when we went to the T-band, there wasn't much support from the Fire Chiefs Association because it was a change and all that. So, that's why I'm saying having the letter and having them to support it to me is big because we're all on the same team, and that's why they wanted to offer support on that. As far as inter-county communications, the way that we handed up there, we sent our communication vehicles, and that's how we set up a command post up there. And we talked on, they're different systems than ours. But there are gateways that we put in place with these systems that you can patch them together. So, one advantage is, is all of our officials that were running for office that visited Lehigh Valley, we share a radio console with Lehigh County, and we have our P-25 system, and we have our analog. And believe it or not, we just patched those channels together. Bethlehem's talking Allentown and Lehigh during that event, and that kind of made it seamless. So, there are interoperability things and features that you can take advantage of with the P-25 system.
Right. But then the digital system that you want to go to, that would be the P-25.
Yeah, we're currently, Bethlehem's currently on it, and it is currently expanded so far.
But you still need to do.
We need to finish the northern part of the county.
Okay. Would that be, I mean, like.
Basically, the current system.
Lehigh Township.
Yeah, the current system that we are building now, which we refer to as Site 1 out of the ARP fund, that is covering the 7822 corridor. Okay, so, it basically is going to cover up to, I'll draw your line at Nazareth. It's probably the easiest. So, that northern area where we would look at improving sites in, Palmerton, Seminary, Transco above Pinarjil, Fox Sky up above Upper Mount Bethel, and then Montana Mountain over in Jersey that actually shoots back and hits forks in Lower Mount Bethel. Those are the sites that will be added into the P-25 system.
Thanks. Thank you.
I try not to get too technical. Sorry.
What's that?
I try not to get too technical.
No, 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 no. That was great. I appreciate your answer. It was very good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mr. Kapoor?
So, the $6 million, will any of that money go back to the municipalities to help them purchase radios? Or is that all going to be from their tax?
That is all for infrastructure. A lot of the departments right now are doing grants through the county and through LSA grants. I saw there was several large ones issued for departments for that. And they actually started transitioning. My department itself has already transitioned with three of the grants we got that basically, by the end of this year, all of our apparatus will be done, and we'll start working on radios. But right now, this fund is specifically for building the infrastructure to get those radios they're purchasing on it.
Mr. Gaffray.
You would have to upgrade the radios and the pagers, I'm assuming?
What's that?
Would you have to upgrade the radios and the pagers?
The radios will be upgraded. Pagers will continue on the simulcast 500 because that is a county-wide channel for now.
Then how much more expensive are the radios under the P-25 system than?
Radios on P-25 system are significantly more expensive than an analog radio. Basically, they're mini computers. They can range anywhere depending on the manufacturer and all the extra bells and whistles that you would get with it, from $4,000 to about $8,500.
How many for a typical fire company?
I would say average mobile per fire department, depending on their size, you're probably talking four per fire department. And then portable radios, depending on how their officers are, I would say at least figure 10 per department as just trying to balance it out. And I can say, and we do have, we are working with, and we get the inventory, the department gets in to see who's actually already prepared to just see how we can start moving once that infrastructure is there.
Is that, I understand you can go for grants and everything, but obviously, that's a huge expenditure for these smaller fire departments.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Just takes time. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. So, I've talked to Council before about our needs. I'm sorry. Sue Wondolowski, Director of Human Services, Lower Salk in Pennsylvania. I've talked before about our space needs at Human Services. So, I had some help putting together really mostly photos to demonstrate what we've been talking about because I think it's one thing to hear it, it's another thing to kind of get a visual for it. So, just, and I'll go through this pretty quickly for you guys. We broke it down by three, we have three floors. We broke it down by floor because there's been so much renovation on the building since we moved in. So, folks moved into the Human Services Building in March of 2014, which predates this administration in terms of county executive and myself. And at the time, it was meant for the DHS employees' juvenile probation and the revenue office. So, that was March of 2014 at the time. You can see we had nine conference rooms, eight interview rooms, five family visit rooms, a mailroom, and a storage room. And I think one of the things, as I was putting this together, was most striking to me is that within two years, so those of folks who are around Council and planned for this building, obviously, I was not here. I don't know how long that went on, but that was not a short process. There was a lot of planning and collaboration about what we would need and what that building would house. And within two years, that all changed. So, the anticipated need, that, I mean, I realize it's hard to kind of look into the future, but I think that's part of the point is, in terms of the space, within the two years, we were already making changes. So, that was when, in May of 2016, they finalized plans to relocate DCED into the Human Services Building. And in order to do that, they're on the first floor. They took four conference rooms and two interview rooms to turn it into office space for DCED. And then they took two additional interview rooms away to convert them into a new conference room. So, we started off with nine conference rooms, and we started off with eight interview rooms. Just with DCED moving into the building, basically, that shrunk in half. It's even less now, which you will see. So, the photo on the left, the left door, was one of our family visit rooms. So, for children and youth, we have families. When they come for their weekly or bi-weekly visits with their children, we provide obviously a space for them to do so in a supervised setting. And so, we had to take one of those visit rooms, remember, we had already lost some for DCED, to turn into an office for our family group decision-making supervisor. The office, or the door at the end of the hallway there on the photo on the left, was another conference room that we, it was a small conference room, but a conference room nonetheless, that we had to convert into space for three paralegals within children, youth, and families. The already decorated Christmas door was our second-largest conference room, which we lost when we had to convert that to cubicle space for our family group decision-making unit, which was six. I'm not sure if it's a little more than that or not yet, but there's at least six folks in that room. So, it leaves us, so currently, we now, because of those conference room takeovers, we are left with four conference rooms. We have one large conference room that all of DHS, DCED, JPO compete for. I mean, not literally, but sort of literally. So, because it's the only space that holds more than 10 folks. And so, I did include a slide. That's next week's calendar just for conference room three. So, anybody who wants to have a meeting next week with more than 10 folks, it's not happening at DHS. So, we have to find other space to have those meetings. So, then, we had the mailroom and the storage room, which I mentioned. So, the door pictured on the left was originally, the mailroom was a large space, which was heavily utilized by 270 folks plus DCED plus JPO. And that was converted into office space for six social service aides for children and youth, so the folks who transport parents and children to different things. We took, the other photo of the, it was a small storage room. We converted that to the mailroom. That had been the room where we stored all of our car seats. And I think when I was here, one time in the last year, I was talking about the storage space, and we had all of our car seats stored under the stairwell going up to the third floor. And our facilities gentleman informed us that was a fire hazard. And so, those car seats, you'll see in a later picture, are now moved into an interview room. So, we're just constantly stealing space from other places. So, the rest of the renovations on the first floor, the VA office, some of you have been in there. There are now three employees. There was two. We took a bunch of stuff out of that space by scanning and obviously going digital, which is what we want to do anyway, to create room for another veteran service officer that has been there for over a year. So, the second floor and the third floor have also undergone some significant renovations. So, originally, all of children and youth was housed on the second floor of the Human Services Building. And as I already talked about, family group decision-making, social service aides, excuse me, they are on the first floor now. So, I feel like the second floor has been under renovation since we, since I started. So, I almost finished seven years. There's always something going on. So, we had two conference rooms on the second floor for children and youth, and we had to convert, one of those, it was a small conference room, we had to convert one of those into two offices for supervisors. So, children and youth has one conference room on their floor for all of their needs, which are vast on any given day. We had one larger office. It was actually a very strangely long-shaped room, but it was a large enough office that we were able to convert it into three small offices. They are small. They fit the purse and their desk and maybe one visitor. But at least it provided us the space. And those three, which I don't have a photo of, are actually, you enter the mailroom and the storage room, and behind that is where these three small offices are. We had one large storage area on the second floor that I made them, you know, completely empty years ago, and we turned that into space for four cubicles for our, the LSI or other paralegals. We also had a smaller storage area that we took away and converted into an office. The social service aides had been on the second floor. We moved those to the mailroom, which I talked about, and took away two cubicles to make two offices because as we expanded, we added caseworkers. But with the caseworker to supervisor ratio, we still needed more supervisors. And obviously, they need, you know, private space to do supervision. I'm sorry, this is even, I don't. Car seats. So, this is, actually, we moved them from the interview room. They're now in the only remaining conference room on the second floor in CYF. And additionally, I mean, there's just, there's just stuff everywhere, right? So, some of you may say, well, why do you have all those filing cabinets? You can get rid of those, except that is children and youth. And in the world of children and youth, there are certain records that we cannot, we cannot get rid of, adoption records, different things like that. So, we're paperless as much as possible. And the one, excuse me, the one large storage room that we did eliminate, we were able to eliminate by going, you know, by digitizing all of the records there. So, the third floor makes up all of the rest of Human Services. And we have two conference rooms on the third floor, excuse me, both smaller. So, one is where the Human Services Administration folks are, and the other is down the hall for, both are used for lots of things. So, the one that's right outside of my area, for example, is often signed out by early intervention caseworkers who use the quiet space in order to do intakes for families over the phone. And so, even that one is always being competed for. This is, I didn't have full pictures of the closets that we turned into offices because there are offices and there are people's workspace with information and things in them. But this is one of the offices, or one of the closets on the third floor that was a storage room where all of our aging supplies were that we converted into three cubicles. It's hard to see in that picture, but there's a door all the way on the right. That was a small storage room that years ago, we actually converted to an accommodation room because the demographic of our building, we have a lot of nursing moms, and so, we needed to provide them a private space to be able to take care of those needs. And so, that storage space is lost as well. So, this is the aging storage. So, it was in a, it was in a storage room, and now it's, now it's not. And then we move to drug and alcohol. So, those pictures are both the, right outside the, within the drug and alcohol area, as well as they've now taken over the, almost all of the storage in the cafeteria. The cafeteria has a lot of cabinets, which are now all under lock and key with drug and alcohol supplies. We have stuff under the counters, under the counters there. So, we are busting at the seams. And I will say, even with the renovations that children and youth made, we still are short space for 10 caseworkers and three supervisors. So, even with all of those things, we're still in need of more space. So, even with all of those things, we're still in need of more space. For aging, they, other than children and youth, they made the most significant renovations as well. So, added a cubicle wall for privacy for a supervisor, because there was no offices. We eliminated three cubicle spaces, so we could have two small offices, also super small, added two cubicles in a storage area where you could walk through previously, and then, January of this year was the bigger renovation, where we added those hotel-style desks I've talked about here.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I think some of us are getting a headache, our screens are flashing like a strobe light. Is there a way to just?
All of your screens are flashing.
Are yours? No, I'm just saying, why don't we just look at the, you hand?
I can turn that off for you, does that help?
Send it in a subliminal message.
I know, I know, I'm.
Just turn it off.
I will, for the record, my, my screen was not flashing.
Yeah, no.
I wish you would have said something sooner, sorry about that.
Mr. Warren was enjoying it, I, I, but I, I was getting a headache, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I'm, now, now that I'm almost done, you're, you're, the strobe light's over. So, we talked about the hotel-style desks that we added, we had to add it, we made a makeshift office for a supervisor out of cubicles and a door, and then, I talked about taking away, we reconstructed the cubicles all along the, if I'm looking at the building, it's the right side, since, I don't know the directions over there, and we downsized them to add nine additional cubicles. Interestingly, we had someone who had a leg injury and a leg brace, and had to, we had to relocate that person, because the smaller cubicles were not, didn't accommodate that, that need. So, so even some things that, you know, you wouldn't think of, have, have kind of gone on. And then, we did some work in the health choices area, we, we added another, we turned a cubicle area into an, into an office. I think one of the biggest things is, other than, obviously, the lack of space, the lack of storage space, I think that's all apparent. Give me a second, I went right out of my head. It will come back to me. So, the last point, if I don't recall the other one by the time I'm done, some folks have asked about, I, I've heard folks talk here about remote working, and I wanted to let council know that when we negotiated with P S S U for their new contract, which we now have signed, we offered a pilot remote work program for caseworkers. And the primary stipulation was that, to be eligible, you had to be up-to-date on paperwork. And ultimately, the negotiating team turned down that part of the offer and the contract, and so, it was offered, it was declined. Additionally, I've had numerous supervisors and directors tell me that, for the employees who require more oversight, it's hard enough to hold them accountable in the office, and they would not have any interest in doing so if it was, if it was remote, because it would just be so much more difficult. So, any questions?
I have a question. Somebody before me.
Mr. Giovanni, go ahead.
I have one, just one question. How many caseworkers do you have?
Well, Human Services has approximately 270 employees, that's, but that's not just caseworkers, that's all DHS employees.
So, caseworkers are the ones that go out to people's?
Children and youth caseworkers, and other, more so children and youth caseworkers, depending upon the unit they are within. So, there's, I mean, probably half of that is caseworkers, but I don't, I mean, I, I definitely could be off on that number, Mr. Giovanni, I'd have to get that for you.
How about Department of Agent, the seniors, caseworkers go out to see them?
The protective services workers are, go out to do their assessments and their investigations, and they're in and out between the community and the office, yes.
How many days a week do you say?
I, depends on their schedule, I, it could, it could be every day, they have one appointment, it could be, some days they do, you know, maybe one day they do four appointments, so that they don't have appointments the next day, it really varies by caseworker. But theoretically, they could be out, in and out of the office every day. Not every caseworker, but protective services.
Go ahead, we'll go that way.
All right, well, but they still have to come back and do their paperwork in their office, they're supposed to have somewhere, in the Human Services Building?
That's correct.
Okay, for this roaming people. I was here on council in 2011, I was part of the team that looked at the building as building for you, well, not for you, but for Human Services. Do you, you, you're saying, I mean, this was Stoffey's little pet dream, because he was in his, Ron knows, he was in Human Services in Lehigh County and everything, so you don't have the offices anymore, that you, you do interviews and then the escape, because he was really into, if you have volatile?
There was this whole, when I came in, the, the corridors and the safety, and this was for staff only, it, it's like blown out the, out the window, yes.
Could we just turn this off?
Turn the computer off. I unplugged my monitor.
Is it still flashing on you?
No, it just continues to ding, and it's, it's so unnecessary, it's interrupting you.
Steve, this paperless system isn't working.
I just shut it down, I just shut it, yeah, that's fine.
Your air on?
Ah, yeah. I'm relying on paper, thank you very much.
Yeah, 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 yep. Sure, okay.
Now, it's dead. All right, so.
I tried.
Put a knife in it.
So, the original, when you, when you came, we had the.
Didn't happen for Mike.
We had the offices, the hallway, where you can do the interviews, and, and your caseworker could get out, in case the person got violent, and that's all gone.
It's not that it's gone, it's that there are far fewer, and because of the makeup of having to swap rooms for, for different usages, it doesn't have the same level of original intent of safety as, as it was designed for.
Like, D C E D should have never been in there, what other units are in there that shouldn't be in there, that aren't Human Service, under your purview?
So, it's D C E D, J P O, and then the, there's a, I think there's two folks who, who work in the revenue office. And even when we look at D C E D and J P O not being there, with the needs that I know C Y F already has, that will already take up the, the space that's being vacated. And when I project forward, especially in aging, with our, our baby boomers, and the volume of calls and, and the number of referrals going up, I think the anticipation is that the state is going to have to provide us additional funding down the road to have additional caseworkers in order to meet the demands. So, the, the need for even just cubicles is going to, to, to go up. And again, we've been as creative as possible downsizing folks, which no one loves, and making these hotel-style workstations.
Right, and I know, I know Mr. Giovanni loves to hang his hat on this remote worker thing, how did that remote worker thing work when we had COVID with everybody?
That did not work out as well as I would have liked. I think it was, every effort was made to have systems in place, you know, to provide oversight, but that, there are personnel issues that transpired, that would not have transpired had they been in the office.
Do you think, with your experience and what happened with remote workers, you think that would be a, you know, we have all different departments, and I know you can't speak for every other department, but you think we'd see the same kind of incidents all over the county if we had, uh, remote workers?
Yes, in my opinion.
All right, so, if we got rid of everybody out of your building, hopefully, you would have enough room, I don't know if we can go up four floors, I don't know if we can go up another floor.
I asked that, I, it is, it is a, not a zoning issue. The point that I wanted to make before, that went out of my head because of the strobe lights, the office spaces that we have added, right, so adding walls and doors has certainly impacted the HVAC system's efficiency and whatnot. Now, I'm, I don't pretend to know the inner workings of that, except to say that our building facilities manager is constantly being harassed by one of us about, can you turn my temperature up, can you turn my temperature down, and it's too cold here, and it's too cold, and he's in the ceiling and moving valves. And so, the building was built how it was supposed to be built, and we've had to modify it, and it is meeting the needs of, of what we have, but we know we need more offices down the road. And so, with expanding back into D C D and J P O area, at least, that will prevent us from interfering with the HVAC any further.
Right, well, I was, that was a big contention on my part, when they built the building, was the H V A C systems that we were putting in it, I think, the guy who built it, North Star Construction built it. So, it was a huge thing for me, when they were putting the H V A C units on, they did, I didn't want a homeowner unit, I wanted a real commercial unit. So, but anyway, if, if you got all these people out of it that don't belong there, you can re-convert the offices back to what Human Services was meant to be, how it's supposed to function?
Yes, and, look, it's amazing to be under one roof, right, Human Services, which, you know, before the building, they did not have. And so, if we had that space, we would absolut, we have been very creative, and we would absolutely continue to be creative, and that would be, that, that would certainly help meet the needs that we have today. And that's just today, that, I guess that's my point, is, two years into this building, the need already changed.
They already started taking stuff from you. So, I mean, for anybody who doesn't know, we had Governor Wolf building, we had the Bechtel building, what other one did we have, Ron? That people were scattered all over the place, we had veterans walking up three flights of stairs to try to get into the office, that, that entire thing, so. Okay, so, if we got rid of the people, put them somewhere else, we could get you back to a functioning.
Correct.
Building, like we intended to when we built that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Madam President. Something I've been thinking about is population, population increases that we are going to inevitably see, we're at, what, 319, 320, right now? I remember it was approximately five years ago, it was a Lehigh Valley Planning Commission meeting, and it was talked about how 2030, 2040, there's going to be a million people in the Lehigh Valley region, yes, Lehigh County and Northampton County, but with regard to Northampton County, I don't know if it's somewhere around 450,000 that we're going to be getting to in the future, say, perhaps 10 years from now. Population increases like that over time, what does that do with regard to Human Services? The level of government, assuming, I mean, we're talking about caseworker-supervisor ratio, and that's going to be affected, correct?
Sure, if you have, you know, if, if we get 8,000 referrals a year now, with a population of 320,000, and you add 150,000 folks to that, I mean, I'm not, I can't do that math in my head that quickly, percentage-wise, but your referrals are going to go up.
It's coming, it's coming, the population boom is coming.
So, it will increase the need dramatically for both, obviously, state funding and for, for space for those folks, yes. The caseworker-to-supervisor ratio is supposed to be four to one, it's four, four or five to one, depending upon the, the division.
In which case, and I believe Mr. Kraft was essentially talking about this and responded to, we're going to need, we're going to need more funding from the state.
Absolutely.
At some point, down the road, because of the population increases.
Correct.
That translates to the operations of Human Services, too.
Correct.
So, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, how's your shoulder? You had surgery.
Thank you, it's, it's recovering, it's recovering well, thank you.
Hopefully, yours is better than mine.
I hope so, too, I guess.
Yeah, you should. Yeah, I, I made reference, too, to the population, and I'm just going to ask you a couple of things, because I, Mr. Kraft touched on it, he was here when building, I came in as an annoying resident at that time, and actually was concerned about the building on a few levels. One was that I thought it was being sold with emotion more than, than, than need, and I mean, it was, it was a great idea, it was nice, and I think I even said something to Mr. McClure at the time, but I understand it, I understand at the end doing it, I get it. And you mentioned one thing that's tremendously important, and for people to know who may not be that familiar with some of the services, just like I'm not familiar with a lot of other things.
Sure.
I remember when I was director, we were all under different roofs.
Yep.
And I can only tell you, and you know, now it's much easier, but the division heads and their little turf wars, they actually said they owned certain buildings, and I had to keep dissuading them of that, and remind them who signed their checks. And they, so, so putting, I mean, my hair was Mr. McClure's color at one time, when I started the job, and it was very different when I ended my eight years. Yeah, so, anyway, it was, it, it was, it was ridiculous. I, I, I mean, and so, on one hand, I thought, yeah, it's good, put them all under one roof. And I'm not going to argue about the Wolf Building, I mean, that was, that, I, we could go back to the 80s on that and talk about the checkered history of the Wolf Building. But my concern was actually what you're, what you're talking about. Well, first of all, I thought, well, do we really need it? Because I was thinking about Mr. Giovanni at one point, I was thinking, you know, with all the things, like Mr. Barron's famous wireless and, you know, paperless and, you know, whatever, we're all going to be in the digital world, but, I mean, social services are social services, it's, it's person-on-person, at the end of the day, you can try and get around it, but it's very hard, I know there's Tella that you can do on things, but it's still very hard, there are certain things you're going to end up being with somebody. So, I came to realize, yeah, okay, I, I think it was a good idea, not that I'm a big multiple buildings fan, I, I, you know, I've complained about that, too, where every administration feels they have to have buildings, like pyramids, but I, I, I came to believe that it was a good idea. My concern was, I didn't know if it was planned for the future, it was planned for the time, and it was hard to get any of those words in, and I'm sure Mr. Kraft will grant me the, the aludgy of saying that, it was a very emotional time at times with the argument. I mean, so, there were, it was good, it was viewed, I know he was involved in planning that, but the, the thing is, you know that you're going to need, we have to think about, and I've been thinking, I've mentioned it before, Mr. Warren mentioned it, I think within a few years, we're going to have between Lehigh and Northampton County, a million people. I mean, not all of them will be homeowners, in fact, a fair amount of them will be, I don't want to say transient, but they'll be renters, and we're a bedroom community now, whether we like it or not. And that is always going to put a strain on social services in, in one form or another. So, yes, you need the entire building, and I believe, and I could be wrong, maybe Mr. Emili knows, but I don't think, the building wasn't built to accommodate going up any higher, or the zoning didn't permit it.
Zoning doesn't allow for the fourth floor.
I knew that came up before.
I tried that in year one, Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's a footprint, it is. And, and that's, that's across the board, I'm not going to blame anyone executive, I mean, that, or administration or council, we, we, sometimes it's tough, you're building for the moment, you're looking at your budget, but, yeah, I, I think it, what threw things off was when stuff started going out there, beyond.
Sure.
Human services. I would say this, and I remember when I went early on, when I got back on council, I think council members, it's always informative, I'd come out a few times, and I walked through, and you took me through, and I know you have to, even if you're on council, you have to get permission to go up the stairs.
Yes, you do.
And I know there's, there's reasons for that, but I know there's also ways you could, you can get people that are elected, like council, council members approved to go up into that area.
You just need to be, yes, you let me know, and.
But, but I mean, to have their swipe card, where, while they're, while they're there, that they could do it, and I think it would just be something where, if you had a chance to go in and easily walk and swipe, and when you're not elected anymore, you just cancel them out, you know, the card gets canceled out, but while you're in office, I, I know you can get permission to have certain people walk through.
Yeah, that I don't, that I don't know anything about.
As long as they're, as long as they go through the clearance process that the state mandates. But, but having said that, I think it's good that if we, people could walk through and see, because I do know you're stressed, I know you were stressed a few years ago, and I, too, would like to see less, but unfortunately, I, I don't think that's a, that's a reality going forward. Just like, I moved to Bethlehem, because I thought it was the nicest little, small-town city in the area, it's not that much that anymore. And so, you know, times change, things change, whether we like it or not. I, I think you're going to need your building going forward, I hope it lasts out for quite a while, I, I think it will, if you can get all that space back.
I, I, I think that in conversations, projecting out, certainly for the next decade, if we have that space back, we can make it work.
Veterans would stay out there, right?
Yes.
And they're okay with the space they have, right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, no, they're, they're, they're okay, so.
And.
And I think, I would love if people needed less Human Services, that would be, that would be a good thing, right? If you don't need the services that we provide, that's just not, that's not going to happen.
When you're going to have an influx of people, and I, I, look, I did the abuse investigations and other things, people always think it's a certain kind of person that you're going to see, you're certain, I can tell you, it cuts across every strata of society. to see, you're certain, I can tell you it cuts across every strata of society, very wealthy.
Yep.
Poor, it doesn't matter, especially, and we all know, and I know Ms. Heffner and I've spoke about this, mental health services, all, not just the county, but everywhere, lag behind--
Yep.
--the needs. And I think as you put more and more people here, I think that's gonna be something that is gonna be pushed and pushed and pushed--
Absolutely.
--harder and harder. And I think the state, the feds will probably push, the state will push, and then here we are. So I guess the two things I wanted to ask you, you had the lunch area, and I remember we walked--
Yes.
Is that still available for the staff?
So there still are, there still are tables there for staff to eat at, it's, when you, it's not a massive space, I mean, it's not like the cafeteria here.
No.
But, but, I don't know, maybe there's eight, eight tables of like four--
Yeah, you have vending machines.
--around there, but then there's, right, the vending machines are there, and then there's the fridges and microwaves and stuff, and then it's, we have a ton of cabinetry, which, that's what we now use as, even with all those boxes in the drug and alcohol area, they have filled the whole kitchen and all the cabinets as well. So we're utilizing the space while, while still giving the employees a small space to be able to, to be away from their desk, so.
Okay. And you also mentioned about the conference room, people, is that the one that's off your administrative offices?
Correct.
There's one, right?
Yep.
So people have signed that out and they use it for interviews?
Anybody is allowed to use it if it's, if it's not signed out because it's--
But it's being used consistently, you're saying?
Every day, absolutely. And not just, I mean, I use it almost every day, but so do other people almost every day, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to ask.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Heckman, I think you asked a question, you said, or maybe you brought it up, going up another floor, and you said you couldn't do it because zoning, was it possible to be done structurally to that building?
Oh, well, the zoning won't allow for it, all I, there's--
You guys apply for a zoning variance?
Well--
Since you are government and you're in a central need, like say, hey, can we get a variance to go up?
It's outside the scope of my--
Excuse me?
It's a height restriction for Bethlehem, Texas.
Yeah, you get a variance, that's what variances are, they're breaking the rules for a special exception. So it's like, that's what I'm saying, it's like, I'll go into it further when we get to our discussion, but there's options, we have lots of options, and you're giving us one option. And I asked two weeks ago, it's like, hey, if you guys give us some other options, but we gotta bid a $63 million bond, that's it, take it or leave it. And fortunately, if that's the case, like I think everybody knows where I stand, and I hear everybody's concerns about needing space, but we are gonna build a palace for an absorbent amount of money to satisfy needing some space, which could have creative solutions if we get creative. That's what I'm saying, so would we apply for a variance? If we can get a variance and go up a floor, wow, we could solve your entire problem--
Could you guys not?
--for a fraction of the cost.
Interrupt or speak while somebody else is speaking.
Any other questions for me?
No, thank you.
There's just little comments and little interruptions, if we could just hold the space, everyone will have time to debate later.
Lots has been said, Mr. Heckman, I hope my hair looks as good as yours when I'm here.
Okay.
With respect to Mr. Cefredo's question earlier about the expense of the radios, one of the things that makes me feel okay about that is the fire chiefs actually wrote us a letter asking us to put this $6 million in the bond for public safety to expand the P-25. Another thing that makes me feel really good about it, if you look at our public safety grants, because, you know, public safety is government's first priority, like Mr. Amili's talking about people getting hit in the head in a garage, but with respect to fire protection, we're already paying for police departments and fire companies' radios as they apply for them through the public safety--
Give me my question.
Yeah, so if you look at your budget, that, that's what a lot of those grants are for.
I'm all for the upgrading the radios.
And if you, if you look at the previous years, you'll see that we're buying the fire companies' radios. With respect to your point, Mr. Kraft, with regard to remote work, county government is a public-facing government. You can't be remote with the criminal division. When you're coming in to pay your fine to stay out of jail, you gotta do it in person. Same thing with the platonator's office, when you're coming in to get your divorce papers, you gotta come in and get your divorce papers. Every aspect of county government services are public-facing, and the vast majority, I would say over 99% of them, cannot be done from home. Thank you, ma'am, I'm done.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak from the public? Is there any discussion among council members?
I'll kick the ball off, might as well. I, I think Mr. Cefredo makes a good point, and sometimes we don't do that. And that is, are we thinking of solution, are we thinking of alternatives? And in fairness, we don't always do that. We, we have an idea in our head and we plow, plow forward, and we don't, as they say, think out of the box. And I, I think with the building out there, if I'm, I could be wrong, John, but I believe, Mr. Amili may know better than I, just like the parking deck, when I asked him about building up at one time, years and years ago, the building isn't structured in a way that it would accommodate another floor. Now, I could be very wrong on that, but I know, that's part of what I say when we came up with, when we come up with projects, that sometimes it's like, let's build it for today without thinking about, like, maybe 30 years down the road. And it may not be possible, but I'm questioning that part about the building out there, because, to be honest, that's not the greatest building. No, no offense, Mr. Kraft, but you know, you weren't, you did everything you could, I know, but it, it's a building, and we use it, and that's great. But it's, I don't know, that could be the case there, but I--
Probably right.
I can't answer that honestly for you. But, no, you can talk, that's okay.
Yes.
We talk. But let me just say, I've been pulling out everything they've given us on this, back and forth, back and forth. And then, and I must say, the ideas over time, and I'm one who, actually, and I have to say in fairness to Mr. Brown, when I first ran in 2017, I made the speech about executives wanting to build monuments to themselves, like, like the ancient pharaohs, you know, everybody gotta have a building that, as part of my administration is, we have to have a new building somewhere. And I, that was not personal, that was politics. But, but at times, it seemed like it was true. But anyway, I, I've gone through all this information, and all I can think of is, you know, I'll give credit to Bill Brackbill, not only for 911, even though we disagreed, we disagreed heartily on how it was done, and I disagreed even when it was, he did it. And Mr. Weaver would know, he could talk to us that, that was a, we called it the 911 wars. We knew we needed it, it was just how were we gonna do it? And it was brutal, filled, filled this room up every, every council night, which is scary. But he had an idea for kiosks, like county kiosks at different locations throughout the county, where people wouldn't have to come here, and they could pay a bill or do something with their credit card. And it was an interesting idea, but, you know, it ran into some snags. I forget that, what knocked it out at times, or something, maybe it was security at the time yet, at that time. But, so I agree with you, we should always be thinking outside the box, and you know more about construction than I certainly do. So I went through all this, and I thought to myself, okay, as someone who's not a big fan of, of building buildings and constructions like that, and even bondage is to a degree, what about this, where do I, where do I go with this? I guess what I'd say is that it is true that present and future use is important, and I, I think that whether we like it or not, I mentioned before about the county changing, and I'm sure I can speak to some of the folks here, what used to be, there used to be almost two counties at one time, there was the counties, the county was south of 22, we always used to joke about it, and then there was Northampton County north of 22. And they were like two separate counties. And, but over the years now, that has changed, just like houses, Mr. Weaver talks about the fire up there, you know, this, the people have moved in and built houses, and more and more housing has gone up, up country, as we used to say, up county. So we have to look at the future use, and a lot of the stuff we had done here, we looked at the present use. Where are we today, where we might be tomorrow, but not that tomorrow's after that. So I got the sense that this looked at to that, I'm not sure, I know, if we needed more room on this building, this human, this county government's building, I don't know how expandable it is, I'd like to think the way, because of the plaza you've mentioned and that, that it could be expanded, if necessary, on location, without the need for, you know, going somewhere else. That, that was my understanding. And the, the election, we've been told about having our own floor, to me, that's very important, very important. And I keep thinking about the increased population, about the needs, what we're gonna need. No one wants to do bond issue, but I, and having voted against some times, I can't, it's not about any individual, it's about what's gonna be in the best interest of the county. And I personally think, maybe I'd do something differently, but I'm not sitting out there. All I can do is either approve or disapprove of this, of this bond. And I, and we all have a job to do up here, you know me, I respect the county council, I respect the legislative branch as much, if not more, than anybody. I've been fighting for many years to remind even people sitting up here, you're an equal and separate branch of county government, act like it, damn it. And so I, I applaud any efforts council members make individually concerning what they should or shouldn't do, and how they should push forward. And everything we get is a sell job, I mean, it's, it's whether you think, at the end of the day, some of the sell jobs are corny, some of them make more sense than others. Sometimes there's way too much selling being done. But I, I don't, I don't see any way around this. I did look, you mentioned the building, and I, I think it was a fork you mentioned with the building.
248 Overtown.
Yeah, okay. I remember when I was director of human services, I wanted, we were talking about a building for human services at that time, then the Planet Fitness Place, that's right out there on two, on William Penn Highway, huge parking lot, I wanted that, and I was pushing that and pushing that with the administration. Unfortunately, something called The Courthouse took precedence, and my idea got shelved permanently. So I agree with you, if you could find something, but till you fit it, I'm just thinking in general, we have that fork, the only thing that worries me is going forward, but it was addressed by Mr. Weaver and hopefully by, by $14 million. The building part itself, I was okay with, I was just wondering, we have this $14 million contingency, and I've always said, I get nervous when there's a puddle of money sitting there, because even though I'm a Democrat, I know that whenever you have money laying around, there's usually these creatures that come up and wanna suck the money out. So I'm, I'm also prejudiced to east in itself. I mean, we're a historic site, we're, this is the county seat, and I believe because of that, the courts can't move, nor can elections move. I mean, yeah, we could be somewhere else, but I don't know, I'm just a nativist in the sense that, we're one of the few places in the colonies where the independence, Declaration of Independence was read. I had for years advocated putting a government center downtown, getting rid of the cafeteria, and taking advantage of the local vendors and helping the economy, you know, can you imagine putting a few hundred people downtown? But, but that's neither here nor there right now. I like the idea of keeping, if possible, our county functions in our county seat. It, it's something that I can't put a dollar amount on, I'll be perfectly honest with you. Maybe it's an outdated thought, but it's just something that I believe in strongly. And I think this is, again, more than just me or any one person here, where this administration is going forward, county's growing more than I like at times, but it's growing. I just think it's something that we may need, we, I don't know what the alternative could be, because we've gotta work together on this. You're not, this is what it is, at least that's my, and I, and that's it, that's all I'm gonna say. That's why I'm supporting this in general, because I, I, you know, with the proviso that we get a better system, we just saw the strobe lights going off that was giving you a headache like me. So hopefully Mr. Barron hears me a few times when I speak, and he's on his phone now. But the thing is--
Just give you a thumbs up.
Yeah, yeah, he hears me, but, anyway, so, no, I'm gonna tell you--
No, no, yeah, you don't have to rush.
And I respect your feelings about it and all your reasons, but I thought it was only fair for me to tell you where I was coming from.
Madam President, may I?
I'm done, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Cefredo.
And you touched on something, and I thought it was ironic that the screens were flickering during the lengthy presentation, but we passed an ordinance, was it an ordinance to get the, or was it a, it was an ordinance, right? We had a deadline date.
Was it an ordinance?
We put a dollar figure on it--
Yeah.
--to simply repair the AV equipment in this room, and we didn't get it. It's not done yet, way past the deadline.
I hear you.
The amount of, you know, it's not like we knew that the administration's been talking for years about, I've been here for three years now, not once has anybody come here and said, we are in closets, we're crammed, we need space. I have heard stuff about the parking deck, but never, this all of a sudden came in front of us as a $63 million ordinance with two buildings, two structures, and then a litany of, you know, things that they would want, without any communication with council, it was like, hey, we're thinking about doing this, what do you guys think, got any solutions? Can we talk about, like, how we would, you know, work together? And now we'll be called obstructionist if we don't go along with this right at this moment with, you know, I tried to give opportunities to say, hey, can you guys give us some other options, can we talk about how we could do this a little bit more affordably, can we talk about how we'd be a little bit more creative with solving the problems that you have? I don't wanna just say no, but right now, the way this stands at this moment, I have no other answer but no, because of how we have been cut out of the process, and when we do ask for things to get done for our space, it's ignored. So I am very sympathetic to the space needs, I'm very sympathetic to the desire of having everything in a county seat. And although you can't put a dollar, and Mr. Heckman, everything you said, I agree with you, and you know, while you were talking, I was like, man, yeah, maybe I should go along with it. I'm not, I'm dead serious, I do understand, and aside from the fact that I hate the way it looks architecturally, I think having everything in one spot would be fantastic, super convenient, but there's always a dollar amount that you could pin on something. And whenever somebody has to spend their own money, they know what that dollar amount is. But we don't, because we're a government, and all we say is, the money's there, it'll be coming in, we can afford it, but at the end of the day, it's not our money, and when the man was up here talking about the food bank, and how we are spending, you know, more and more people in the county need food services because, guess what, we got poverty. But we have no problem spending $63 million for a mega office and a brand-new parking deck and buh 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 buh. Any guy that's in business, when they spend money to build and expand, there's thought that goes into it, it could take years, they think of everything. We did the human service building, how long ago?
Right on the paper here.
How long ago?
2012.
12 years ago, it's already, it's, it's not adequate anymore.
Well, it was adequate.
You wanna know why? Because government is terrible at this. So the less things that we can build, the better, in my opinion, the more money we could save, the better, in my opinion. And if the government is, or the administration is dead serious about the needs, voting this down today doesn't take it off the table forever. We can talk about this, we can make sure it is done, so all problems going into the future for 100 years, I think that's how we should think as a government, we should think 100 years into the future. Doesn't mean we need to make this decision tonight the way it needs to stand, because A, can't stand the way that building looks, can't stand it at all, but that's my personal preference, and guess what, I'm one of the nine, my preference, in my opinion, matters. But apparently it doesn't, because we didn't know about any of this until this ordinance came to us, which I don't like, and the fact that our opinion is disregarded, well, I'm against it, and that's the way it's gonna stay.
Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Madam President. Cefredo, I completely understand where it comes from. Seriously, with regard to this, because years ago when I was in Eastern City Council, we were in the Alpha Building on Third, and this was shortly before I was, I was coming off, when they were making the plans for the new Eastern City Hall. And I remember talking to our, our Director of Administration at the time and said, you know, like, what's going on, why do we need to do this? Why do we need to embark on this project, this huge project? He went through things with me, I still wasn't convinced, I wasn't convinced at the time that we actually needed a brand-new building, okay, let's look, let's look around, see how we can outfit certain things. And it was, I believe it was our Community Economic Development Director at the time said, Jeff, we're growing, the city is changing, the city is changing in terms of its programming. said, Jeff, we're growing, the city is changing, the city is changing in terms of its programming, the dynamics of who we are are changing, and as a result of that, we have to change and adapt with it as well. And I remember she made a very compelling argument, not, not that I'm trying to do that right now, not that I'm trying to convince you, but initially I was not a big fan of the new Easton City Hall, quite frankly, but after some time, and looking at it, examining it, as I've done with this project, and Mr. Heckman, you said, you said it, you know, what's, what's going to inevitably be in the best interest of the county. The magnitude of this project is not lost on me, I'm not supporting this simply for the sake of supporting it. I've talked with Ms. Wondolowski, talked with Ms. Smith, and what we are going to need for the future as well. Again, the project, this project and the magnitude of it is not lost on me. Again, I'm not trying to convince you or any other members of council on how to vote, just to portray and put that, put forth the message that, I, I do understand where you're coming from. I think as we continue to grow as a society, as a county, our communities, that we have to grow as well with our services and even our physical buildings as well. Sometimes it's just needed, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, I, I'm.
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead, you first, and then Brown.
I, you know, everything we've built here since I've been here since 2011, came in on time, under budget, all right? There are budgets, I know it's going around numbers like sixty million for a building, it's actually, I think, worth forty million for the parking deck in the building. I'm not asking you for a response. It's like, you know, you can go right down to West Shingle Ball Library, the courthouse, the juvenile detention center, the Archives Building, nine-one-one center, the forensic building, it's, it's stage of the same tired arguments, we're going to spend money, we got to blow the bond, we can't be forward-looking, let's wait. Bonds cost money. Bonds are going to go up, it's going to cost a heck of a lot more money. This has no impact on our taxing structure, no impact on the way we can pay for it. This has been over a year, we've been talking about it since I've been here. I'm sure it was on the burner somewhere before I came. It's not like a harebrained idea, and I don't think this administration would look, not look into every possibility before they would ask to build something. We did the same thing with the forensic center, oh, we can't build the forensic center. Did the same thing with the, you know, the new nine-one-one center. Everything was the same argument. The human services building, and you'll attest to it, you came here, no one wanted to have it in the same place. Oh, my God, you're going to put it above the township. We did studies of where everybody comes from around the entire county, and the fastest way for everybody to get to, where everybody who works in human services is coming from to go to work. I mean, they wanted to put it across the street and build a massive building. We ended up where we ended up because of that dynamic. But it was the same tired argument of, why should we do it now? Let's not do it now. We need to do this, you know? If you're not having your eyes wide open after three years of being here and knowing that these, these people are not having space and running out of space, and we're putting people all over the county, the DA was here, he told you, the old DA, the new DA, we don't have room, we got people in the basement here, for the DA's office, their investigators are in the basement, down around the corner, all the way down, they're up here and they're building here. The courthouse is the problem, I think Jermaine Green was here last night saying he had to move somebody from somewhere, find room for how many people?
Seven.
Now, that's the courts. When the courts come here and say, hey, I want to build a new, oh, I forgot about the courthouse. Oh, my God. And we had to build a new courthouse? You should have heard that, courthouse in prison, I think they took half the floors off the prison to build this courthouse. It's the same tired argument. We didn't need all these courtrooms, we didn't need all that room. Well, when the courts start needing space, they're going to say, we need space, and guess what? You're going to build a bond, because you have to. So we need space in this building, courts is going to take all the space, and so is the DA, as soon as it's gone. Elections don't have the room. If you haven't been down to the elections office, if you haven't seen what was going on, you're not opening your eyes again. You're, you're walking down the hall with nightmares of, if you didn't see the message there. I was the chairman of the election commission, we were in a little building across the street with extension cords running all over the floor to run the equipment. I mean, actual orange extension cords running around to run the computers. It was a mess. The only reason why it was closed was because the city of Easton closed it down, it condemned the building on us. We'd still be in there, trying to run an election. You got to be a little forward-looking, you have to really, really get out of your small construction mind of what you build, and get into what we're building and what we need to do. And I know, I know, I'm sorry, not small construction, tilted buildings are a great, great task to build. But, you know.
Ken.
It's, you really need to, you really need to think about the future.
Ken, Ken, if you think insulting me is going to sway my decision, your brain is, is...
You're a hard no.
No, 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 no.
I'm sitting here because we're, we converse, and when Mr. Heckman tells me his side, and when Mr. Warren tells me his side, I listen to it, I take it into consideration, but when you do stuff like that, makes my decision easier.
We already said you're a hard no, so I'm just saying that we needed before we're thinking, and I've heard this argument a hundred times, it's stage of the, it's 2011, same, same argument, over and over. Then we build this, like, oh, wow, we needed it. Yeah, we needed that space. Oh, wow, yeah, look at that. So I'm supporting this a hundred percent, I think everybody else should support it, except for you, of course, and let's move forward and get building this thing, so I can park my car in a parking deck, finally, without having little things dripping on it all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments on this, but I'm within Mr. Gafredo's camp, I, I won't support this for the following reasons. I, we've heard from numerous people, they need space. If you grant that they do, I, I understand the needs out at the human services building that Sue had talked about. But if you go through, when you weed through all of this again, and you go, okay, Mike talked about if we leased, it would be a half million dollars a year, he's talking about leasing a thirty-one thousand square foot building. But the justification that they put in their own presentation is for centralizing elections, divisions, and operations, combining them in the four offices, vacate some of the space that we talked about at human services, you know, move DCD out and probably revenue, which would then free them up, and they'd be okay for today, not, maybe not down, down the road. Allow the controller's office, Ms. Controller Zerinsky was here, and she said, you know, the place stinks, and they got issues, and so on and so forth. And then additional storage space for the DA's office. All of that is general, basic office space. There's thousands of square feet of office space available, even right here in the city of Easton, that whether it be ten, fifteen, or twenty dollars a square foot, we don't need to lease thirty thousand square feet. I don't know what this is, I threw it out at Ms. Zerinsky, even for two thousand square foot, we could find her space within thirty days. DCD, it's office space. Even the, centralizing the elections division, it's office space. We don't need to be building a building for that particular win today, you could lease it for far less money than it would to build a, an oversized property here. The other aspects that we talked about to Todd Weaver's point around the radios, I don't disagree with that, but there's, there's monies in the budget. If the executive wanted to scrape through and find monies to fund the next six million dollars of the expansion of the radio system, it could be done without having to borrow money in order to do it going forward. So overall, that's why I'm looking at it going, I'll think out of the box here, I think there are more cost-effective alternatives to solve the problem. We could probably find this space, and if we cobbled it together, put out a request from local property owners, I'm sure we could get even a more competitive price for that. I think consistently, we've talked about the need to do something about the parking deck, but that has to be carved out, and I don't think we need to borrow sixty-four million dollars for whatever we'd end up doing to the parking deck, renovating it, rebuilding it, or whatever we want Mike to do on that. So when I look at it in, in composite, I just don't, you know, and then the fourteen million dollars of excess, excess money that would be borrowed right now for some future projects that might need to be done, so on and so forth, I just don't see it. I, I, I listened intently to try to understand where this was coming from. I, I didn't hear anything new, we heard a lot of props and, and some things like that going in, which is fine, and the, as I think Ron, you had said, you know, it's the, you know, try to pull the emotional cords, pull at the heartstrings, these, these are all needs that the county has. I just think we could do it for far less money, I don't think we need to go through all the costs. Ken, you mentioned, you know, right now, the Fed cut rates earlier today. So, yeah, so actually, costs are going down in terms of borrowing, so the downward trend with the election that just took place, that wasn't the way I wanted it to go, but the trend is likely that rates will continue to be cut as we try to stabilize the economy. So somewhere down the road, I don't see this being an emergency where we have to run out tomorrow and, and, and get it done. So I think to Mr. Gafredo's point, taking a little longer, looking at this in a little more detail, I, I just don't see popping the cork for sixty-four million dollars today, so, but thank you for everyone's input.
Thank you. Anyone else need to make a point?
I know you want to speak. Is it, I mean, I know we, I, I, what got to me a little, what got to me a little bit was the, and then we heard reasons to possibly do it. And I know we talked about the parking deck, and let me tell you, when that parking deck was built, I think it was terrible. I mean, it was, I, I don't know, I, I've actually, I don't get into it, but I had an issue with my car, when I had my T-Bird, had it parked, I had something hit it, and I went and they said, well, I hope you have good car insurance. That was the county, that was official, but, but anyway, I, I, I know we talked about repairing it, I just don't know how. That, that thing has been cracking and crumbling, I think they made it with Play-Doh at certain points, but it, maybe is that the fourteen million dollar contingency, that's, that's certainly troubling to some. I'm just curious, because I know it's, it's a fair amount being put aside for possibilities of use, and, and that's a curiosity I have.
I can, I know Mr., or Madam President wants to go last, so I'll answer what your question is. My problem is how it's, how we're doing this. Mr. Kraft, I understand it's not sixty-four million dollars a building, we're taking out a sixty-four million dollar bond, which I believe has a lifetime, I think we began paying around ninety-seven million, was the final number, just to borrow the sixty-four million, so another thirty million on top of that, that's what happens when we borrow money, we have to pay with interest. For, the goals are, we need a parking deck, we need additional space, and then there's a number of capital projects that we need to handle. Capital projects, we handle in time, we put money aside for certain things, when things are bad, people come to us, we do that, we do that all the time. The parking deck, I would concede to say, yeah, okay, we need to do something with the parking deck, let's talk about it, let's talk about how big the parking deck needs to be, how much money we need to spend, and then the office space is where I'm officially hung up, because if you look at the market, office space is literally the worst investment nationally, because it is in high supply and low demand, and we are going to build a brand-new office building when, yeah, if we take our time and our patience, I guarantee you, we'll find a building to buy in the county seat of Easton. Do I need to find it? I, I did a Google search, found, it was in Easton zip code, I guess Palmer Township, I guess it's not in the city, which I agree, we'd probably be nicer to be in the city, so let's wait a little longer, until we find a building that works for us. Because we could buy it for pennies on the dollar, then going through the process of paying labor rate, material rate, the time it's going to take, it's expensive. So, yeah, that's my, that's my hangup. I will concede to the points that the administration is making, and I think it is something that needs to be done in good time, and I think we should plan future things. Absolutely, agree with all those things. That's why, when you were speaking, I was thinking, yeah, he makes a good point, but then I just keep coming back to, we're going to build office space when nobody wants office space these days.
Anyone else?
I have one little thing. John, you had said that the interest rates are coming down, which they are, and money's getting cheaper to borrow for you and me, but government bonds, they get more expensive as the interest rates go down, as you know. So this bond issue, whatever we're trying to do, if we wait longer, maybe more money for us to pay back than it is right now. So it doesn't work, interest rates go down, bonds go up, because they, they play off of each other. So, just to clarify that. So the longer we wait, the more the money may cost us to borrow. And as you know, we do bond issues all the time, that's how government works, that's how we build our things, we don't just take our, you know, money and just pay for it cash, never do that, so, just to clarify that.
So we have the right to call for the vote this evening, if council is interested. I have no problem with building a parking garage, and I believe one of the earlier presentations that came to us, whether it was at the committee or in front of the council or the hall, was that there was at least a, a three-tier plan, and those options were not presented to us. I would be willing to say yes to the parking deck with the option to build later, and like, as you said, take into consideration some of the alternatives or ways for space. That, to me, Mr. Emelian, the brick, is essential, absolutely essential, and it's time-limited. I also remember the first presentation that we got about this, which articulated very specific needs, very specific people moving into that building, and now, as we've progressed, we're hearing all kinds of other stuff. It's up to council whether they want to take the vote tonight, or whether they want to ask the administration to come up with alternative amounts for funding, and a plan A, B, and C, because what I would not want to do is just do a hard no, and then have to wait another however-many week cycle to have to redo a bond and redo another amount. So I'm not sure what the most appropriate mechanism for that is, but I'm just throwing that out there as a point of discussion. Yes?
President, I'd like to call the question. Have us, have us vote on it.
Okay.
Tonight. It's been a discussion point now, not just a discussion point, but various presentations that have been given to us over so many months.
Okay.
So, call the question.
Called. Call for, oh, Mr. Kupora?
I would like the opportunity for what Madam President said, options. We did, we were giving those, but never followed through with detail, so I'd be willing to wait another month, and here are some, some more options, before making my hard no.
I would as well. I, I said before, I'm not saying that we don't need to do something, I just don't know if this is the something that we have to do.
I may have to say something.
Well, I have a question for you, so go ahead.
Counselors should know that I spoke with Attorney Ditka, who is bond counsel. He indicated that with the current advertising, that you could vote on it this evening, and you could vote on it, I believe it's the twenty-first, with the current advertising. And I agree with that.
But just another two weeks, Mr. Brown, right?
The reason I jumped in is I heard a month, and that may be outside of Attorney Ditka's...
Well, no, that's what I meant, that if we don't act within the advertising timeline, then it's going to be kicked out further, correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
I'll support call for the vote with Mr. Warren.
Okay. Thank you. Call for the vote. Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Gafredo?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Kupora?
No.
Fails by a vote of four to five. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Formal Issuance of Printed and Bound Budgetary Information Necessary for the Legitimate and Prescribed Financial Oversight Responsibilities of the Northampton County Council." Mr. Heckman and Giovanni introduced this ordinance at the October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this? Hearing and seeing none, is there any discussion from council members? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is a bipartisan effort, I'm a part of myself, Ms. Giovanni, I think we've spoken about it, hopefully this won't be contentious. But, but no, I, I think that when there was discussion about payables, and I know there was some discussion up here then, I read, and I gave, actually, I gave a sheet to Mr. Panome. Give me a second. I think some of the radiation got into my brain. But anyway, the, I just wanted to be clear about council, you've heard me drone on, but our ability to do this one thing we do, besides others, but this main thing, and that in order to do that... And then, in order to do that, I know from my perspective, if I'm going to be doing that on screens, or forget it. You know, I, at this point, we had a presentation about how there's dead spots in the county and how everybody has the devices to get on. So, I think it's a wonderful aspiration, and one day we may get there, but not in all things. I think in order to do this job, you really need county council now and for the foreseeable future. We've been talking about the foreseeable future. The foreseeable future is going to need written budget books and budget summaries. And so, that's why I had a discussion with Giovanni, and we both agreed on that. And that's why we are, let's, you know, play forward this ordinance. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to just bring to attention of everybody that we've been trying to go paperless ever since I've been here. This is our chance to go paperless. We killed how many trees to make all these books. I like to look at this on an iPad. You can highlight whatever you want. Mr. Giovanni, you know how that works. So, I will not be supporting this, because I think we should stop wasting paper and printing books. We're in this century now. We need to start to adapt. I mean, I know these screens don't work, and I feel your pain about getting an upgrade. I'd like to have a touchscreen here to just have the budget right in front of it. But I will not support this, because I think we need to get away from printing things and wasting all this money every year.
Any other discussion? Mr. Giovanni?
Well, Mr. Kraft, I would agree with you on certain aspects. But printing books, like a budget book or an audit report, I like to have it in front of me where I can make notes instead of keep trying to change the pages on the screen. I mean, I like it more. There are things that were digital documents are great, they're fabulous. I don't disagree with you, but on certain things, I think like, like Mr. Heckman says, the budget book and audit reports, I still get them printed, and I look at them printed. That's my feeling, so I agree with Mr. Heckman on this.
And a second thought on that?
Yes, sir.
We have a print button and a laser printer in there. If you need a copy, a tactile copy, like the old newspapers we used to read, you can do that and print one. But to have the mandate that they waste all this money every year to print and bind a book and everything, I just think it's a waste of funds. So, I mean, it's, I'm squabbling over pennies, so.
Can I make an amendment to the ordinance? Or can, yeah, that can.
Well, you could say what you're thinking.
I would like to offer the option to opt out. If you don't want a copy, and you don't want, if you want to save the, if you don't think you'll use the copy, you have the option to opt out of having your copy printed, so you're not wasting the paper. But I personally, especially for the budget, like to have paper copy in hand. Personal preference, and I think the budget is one of the most important things that we as counsel have to look over. And I like to have it with me. I like to be able to look at it whenever. And I personally, the computer that the county give us doesn't work, ever. So, if the iPad that we get, or whatever we would get to read the new budget, that probably will be a struggle as well. So, I do like having the paper copy.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I hear what everybody's saying. I would, I'm not going to support your amendment only because the idea of 21 copies of a budget. If that's a waste of taxpayers' money, so that we as the, as the gatekeepers and the budget approvers can do our job, then I'm willing to walk through this entire building and all our other buildings and point out things where, despite all the speeches we get about how taxpayer-friendly this, every administration has said they're taxpayer-friendly until they have to raise taxes. And if what we're doing here is going to raise the taxes of people, then I would say there's an inefficiency under the surface with this administration that we're unaware of. I mean, this is not that big a deal. The bond stuff we have to print for everything is more user-unfriendly in terms of taxpayer money. I know the using the term tax, waste of taxpayers' money, I've heard that for decades. And it's a great line. It's used all the time when it suits your purposes. But in this case, this is something that helps us do our job. May not help you, and God bless you for that. But it helps me, and I'd like to think that in the future, if some counsel, and a majority of that counsel says, "No, we'll go paperless." Not that any figures can get changed on a digital format. And when it's in print, it's in print. If somebody comes up with a new number, I know it. But who knows? Maybe somewhere down the road, it'll be a wonderful time, and we'll all have Elon Musk's little optical implant, and we can pull up anything at any time. But the thing is, for now, I'm not, I think this is very, very appropriate. And as far as the taxpayer goes, I think if the taxpayer realizes we need to spend some money, we have printing, to do this little thing to help us do a better job for them, I'm willing to stand in front of a taxpayer and say, "This is what I did." You know, because I felt it was necessary for the job. Because I say, if taxes are going to go up because of this, then we've got fundamental problems beyond my comprehension. But that's just my statement. Thank you.
I think that was a nice way to end, except you said 21, and it says 13 bound. You're changing the number?
No, no, it was 13. 13. I don't know where the 21 came from.
Okay. Just clarifying that we are at 13.
Saving the county money already.
See, we just cut a couple of books out. Can I call for the vote on this? Is there anybody that needs to make a comment? He did not. Does anybody want to second that amendment? I know, you did kind of skewer the poor thing, bro. Call for the vote. Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to two. Thank you. Is there any other old business to bring up? Next, we have new business, introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the 2024 Northampton County Budget, Countywide Salaries and Fringes, Department of Fiscal Affairs, Balancing of the Budget, Department of Community and Economic Development, Community Development Grants, Department of Administration, Emergency Management Elections Grant, Public Defender's Office, Department of Public Works, Department of Human Services Administration, Homeless Assistance Development Fund Grants, Children, Youth, and Families Area Agency on Age, Health Choices, Mental Health Developmental Programs, Early Intervention Drug and Alcohol Opioid Funds." May I have someone sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Mr. Kraft, co-sponsor please? Mr. Gafredo? "The public hearing debate and vote will be held at the November 21, 2024 meeting." Next, we have "Consideration of a Northampton County Ban on Open Burning Resolution." Ms. Keegan, will you please introduce?
Whereas the Northampton County Executive received a written recommendation from the District Forester requesting the enactment of a ban on all open burning in Northampton County, and whereas the proposed open burning ban has obtained the endorsement and approval of at least 12 fire chiefs from various locations in the county, and whereas the existing dry and dangerous conditions and sub-average rainfall have created a risk of fire in Northampton County, and whereas said dry and dangerous conditions warrant a countywide open burning ban for the protection of life and property in Northampton County, and whereas it is the intent of the Northampton County Council to enact an open burning ban, and whereas PA law authorizes counties to provide for the imposition of a temporary countywide ban on open fires, Act Number 52-1995, comma 16, PS 13201. Now therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council as follows. Enactment of open ban, burning ban. All open outdoor burning is hereby banned in Northampton County, Pennsylvania for a period of 30 days from the effective date of this resolution or until further resolution of the Northampton County Council, whichever shall first occur. Two, open burning ban definition. Open burning is defined as the ignition and subsequent burning of any combustible material, garbage, leaves, grass, twigs, litter, paper, vegetative matter involved with land clearing or any sort of debris, out of doors either in a burn barrel, screened or unscreened, fire ring, or on the ground. The use of propane, gas stoves, charcoal, briquet, grills, or the use of tobacco in any form is not covered under this resolution. Campfires are allowed in fire rings that confine and contain the campfire in designated state, federal, or Department of Environmental Protection licensed campgrounds. Three, effective date. The provisions of this resolution shall become effective at 12:00 a.m. on November 10, 2024. Four, public notification. The Northampton County Director of Emergency Management Services shall notify the residents of Northampton County of the open burning ban by, one, notifying the local radio and television stations of the ban; two, placing notices of the ban in both the morning call and the express times at least 48 hours prior to the imposition of the ban; three, notifying all Northampton County fire chiefs of the imposition of the ban; four, notifying all Northampton County municipalities of the ban; five, enforcement. A, this open burning ban may be enforced by any sworn police officer, including but not limited to the Pennsylvania State Police and all police of Northampton County municipalities. B, in accordance with Pennsylvania Act 52 of 1995, any person or entity violating this open burning ban shall have committed a summary offense and upon conviction shall be sentenced to pay a fine of not more than 100 for the first offense, a fine of not more than 200 for the second offense, and a fine of not more than 300 for any third or subsequent offenses. The aforementioned fines shall not limit any other remedies by any other authorities and/or entities. C, whenever a violation of this act occurs in a city borough incorporated town or township which has in effect an ordinance prohibiting open burning, the police officer may cite the violation under either the municipal ordinance or this county resolution. Under no circumstances shall the person be cited for violations of both the county resolution and the municipal ordinance for the same violation.
Thank you. Any discussion on the matter? Yes, sir.
I just want to say that if we've got a dozen fire chiefs here in the county that have endorsed this and said that we should be doing this, I'm going to take them at their word. They are the ones who are on the front lines. So, we've got a dozen, dozen fire chiefs saying that we should be doing this here in the county. I'm going to, I'm going to take their word for it.
So, I just have some clarification, and I don't know if, it's so, it's not in effect immediately? We have to wait till November 10? That's what's stated? Is that for an advertising purpose or something?
It's for a proper notice and per the Pennsylvania Act. It's required by their, that legislative act that you got to give 48 hours' notice. And the way it works is that they need a minimum of 10 fire chiefs to do a recommendation to DCNR fire warden. The DCNR district warden is the one that sent the recommendation for the burn ban. But, yeah, that is their draft ordinance, and they gave a template of how it's supposed to be laid out.
Right, yeah, I have no problem with the intent. I have questions now about just because the date on there, I just thought it would be an immediate effect.
Unfortunately, no.
And then, so it's 30 days unless we would cancel it first, which we won't, right? There's no need. Or we extend?
Or we can extend it. I mean, I agree, I think, I know a lot of people have stopped burn barrels. But I think it's a prudent move, given the extended drought. And I like the fact that 30 days out, you know, if we still have a problem, we can get a recommendation that we can extend it or it'll just vanish. I had a question though for this list.
Can I finish my question, though? Thank you. I was, that's okay. Thanks for your enthusiasm. And I just want to, because I live in a burn, I'm in a burn district, but we're not burning any leaves right now. So, I guess I either hurry up or I don't. But, so, no fire pits, et cetera, on any kind of private property?
Open burn.
But it does say you could have it on state grant, state game lands?
They have actually already put a ban on any state park or federal lands. That actually went up, I think, two days ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead. I just want some, because, you know, I saw that, like, why can't you have a campfire, but you can't do something else? Like, if you're, we're banning it, we're banning it, and I think that's the problem up there on that mountain, so there you go.
We had a memo sent to us, Mr. Scudoni, with this resolution. Are we empowered, I mean, we can, is this enforceable at a county level? Or did you have a, I know you sent a memo, and I didn't understand, because it was just you sending it, and it was this resolution.
Upon citation, it would be handled by the district magistrate.
Okay, but we are empowered to do this?
Absolutely.
Mr. Giovanni?
I've got a question. Tom, I think it's a great, like, no. I think it's a great resolution, but I got one question. I'm going home on 33 North, and I see somebody flicked a cigarette. Here's dry grass. Who's going to enforce that?
Well, if you get a plate number and a person, actually, DCNR and the local jurisdiction would actually enforce that. That happens today with that.
Usually, you're going up 33, you're not going 65.
One thing to note, too, is that any actual wildland fires that are actually created, whether accidentally or by a person that's burning not supposed to, DCNR actually, by their legislation, has the right to actually charge for that fire suppression.
Say that last part again, I'm sorry.
DCNR actually will charge for that fire suppression once they get involved, and it becomes a wildland fire.
I mean, because that gets, gets me aggravated when I.
Yeah, just actually, since October 1st, to tonight before I got here, we had 140 burn complaints in the county, and we had 76 dispatched brush fires. And actually handled 188 calls for brush fires, but some of those were duplicate, but they were actually 76 brush fires and 29 smoke complaints, outdoor smoke odor complaints, so.
Okay. Call for the vote?
I got a comment, Mr. Warren.
I might have one.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Well, if you put your hand where I can't see.
Could there be an exception with the oversight and approval from Palmer Township Police to have the high school have their bonfire?
With firefighters and fire trucks signed on and standby?
Just for that one exception on that one, one evening. The process of building it, not so much a bonfire, is such a student experience. And to take that away would be.
The night before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, theoretically, it could be a moot point if it rains and everything goes away, but.
With the oversight and approval from Palmer.
Police and fire.
Don't they usually, anyway?
Yes, they're there, but.
They're there, right?
Todd, as a firefighter, fire chief, would you agree that if there were two fire trucks on standby at the fire scene, that if anything happened to spread out or spill over, they'd be able to contain it?
I'm not here at that capacity.
What a political.
How about your unofficial?
For example, a fire for like tomorrow, even a small fire with a red flag warning, even with the fire department there, you're not stopping it. And that's, that's really why the fire went from only 100 acres to 600 acres.
Because the wind was blowing.
They weren't stopping it, no matter what they tried, and that was even with two helicopters working. So, that's the unfortunate part. A burn ban's a burn ban, and that's the way the legislation and the format they gave it. Maybe talk to your district forester. However, I'm not sure how you withdraw it within 30 days. I believe by resolution at the next meeting, they would withdraw it.
Can we make sure there's eight trucks there?
As written, it would expire in 30 days.
Would expire.
As written.
Or?
Or we act appropriately before that.
I would like to make an amendment.
Go ahead.
The amendment to state that with the approval day of by the Easton Palmer, whatever the respective jurisdiction, fire department, and police, to have the Easton bonfire, if it comes to that point, if this burn ban is still in effect, if we're still in a code red, which I also, I don't think there's anything in this writing that says if we go out of a code red, does this resolution become a moot point? So, it's staying in effect, we have to pull it off the table. Yeah, see, that's where it's.
So, could I make a suggestion, then? That we have a meeting on the 21st? If we know that the conditions have improved at that time, or you want to put a second resolution together?
The only reason why I want to.
Do it on the 21st?
The only reason why, once this is in effect, then all of a sudden, it's harder to get it out of effect. But I think if people are, you know, if we're here, we're ready to vote on it, they're going to support my amendment, they would support that. So, I will withdraw my amendment.
No, I'm not asking you to. I'm just asking the question.
Well, the amendment would state that if Easton or Palmer, whoever, is it in Palmer? If the Palmer Fire Department and Police Department agree to have the bonfire the week of, the day of, then we should respect their authority and their jurisdiction to properly maintain and protect that site.
I'll second it. An Easton alum?
Let's make sure you have it the way you want it, or you want a wordsmith.
Yeah, sorry, Ali. I know that wasn't easy.
That's the only reason I did run a minute. Okay. But we have to vote on the amendment, yes or no? Discussion on the amendment?
I have a discussion.
Go ahead.
I was listening to the news last night or the night before, talking about the California fires and, and then this one came up. And I forget who it was. It was, I think it was at the federal level, one of the FEMA guys. And they said an ember, maybe it was local, but an ember, which I, I know, you know, embers, but they can travel up to, I forget how many miles. And if they hit some of this dry tinder, which it is now tinder, I mean, if you want to do, if you want to do a campfire, now's the perfect time. I don't recommend it. I'm just saying because you're usually scrambling for tinder, that it could create something. I hadn't thought about the big bonfire. I know they always do that. So I'm not speaking for or against in the sense that if the fire department wants to take over that and be responsible. But I, I just know that I was concerned about this because of burn, but I know some people, they do everything on their own property and I always concerned about property rights. But I think it was a prudent overall, but I hadn't even thought about that. And I remember, I was thinking when I thought it was prudent about this ember thing this guy said. And I was like, damn, yeah, this thing goes, this ember could travel all this way and still be enough to kick it off. So I don't know. That was, that was the reason why I said I'd support it to begin with. But, you know, I'd consider this amendment if, how council feels about it.
I would only suggest about what you say, because you're right, huge fire, embers can travel. Let's leave it to the experts at that given point in time. Because if the conditions are like they are right now and it's windy, they're going to say, no, absolutely not. And I think it should be a, in the moment, give them the experts' opinion, kind of decision. Instead of ours from 25 days away or whatever to.
I made campfires, but that was a long time ago.
I'd like to add into this, you know, I know it's the Easton bonfire? Yeah. Easton, okay. I know it's a big deal because they have the game and everything, but what about all the other schools that have bonfires in Northampton County?
I was just asking.
How many are there? Freedom has one.
Do they have any at this, because ours are usually, others are earlier.
I know they have one at, behind Freedom High School. I don't know what time of year it is, but it sounds, seems like it's around the same time. So I don't know how we could just pick one place. I'm, I like the other idea of it two weeks, it starts raining tomorrow, hopefully, that this, we could just rescind it on the 22nd. I don't know if that'll negate them from building the bonfire because I know what that takes. They have, they use so much wood. But Mr. Heckman's statement, they are massive bonfires. And the embers can go very far and torch, you know.
Houses.
Out, whatever, fall on a roof because everything's so dry. So I'm not going to support your amendment for that reason. But, and that's the only reason.
Having a bad night tonight, can't it be?
All the other schools. I'd support it if it was a good one. But all the other schools, all the other schools and everything, you know, that may have it, I, you know, we're just singling out one. And I understand the Easton-Peabody game's a big deal. I know how you guys, I know you're from Easton, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, no.
Bethan and Catty, Turkey Day.
They're big deals. So I won't support it for that reason. Only that reason, that we can rescind it on the 22nd.
Not for nothing, it's supposed to rain on Sunday and Monday this week.
Yeah, supposed to get half an inch.
Not for nothing, it's.
Not for nothing. There you go.
Supposed to rain.
Put that in the record, Mr. Warren said not.
Make a motion to call for a vote.
Call for a vote on the amendment?
This is about the fire department.
This is about the amendment to have the approval of the, whatever.
Palmer Police and Fire.
Way to frame it in a good light.
That if we're still on a code red status.
I didn't get all the words.
If and only if they provide approval on the day of the Easton bonfire.
That's why she has that job.
I don't know if they'll build it though, if we don't have it. You know what I'm saying?
How long does it take to build?
It takes, it takes a couple of days.
Days, yeah.
Because the pallets need to get delivered and it takes an entire day of them building it and days before it, it takes a lot of coordination. So I don't know if you want to do it the day of or the day before. I don't know if that's enough time.
I think the amendment lets them decide instead of us deciding for them. Yeah. That's kind of the point of, like, I'm not saying they have to have it. I'm just saying let the fire department and the school, let them kind of figure it out so we don't ruin their good time.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I was just informed that mitigation efforts have already started. They've already watered down the field. They're doing it every day. So they're anticipating having this and.
It's supposed to rain next Thursday too. Yeah, which would be great.
Me and Jeff are on the same page on this one.
I'm, I'm just going to go with the amendment and then I'm going to go with the vote because I can't figure out the what for's. All I know is one time we had a neighbor drop ashes in my backyard because he wanted to get them out of his fireplace and our whole tree line went up and we had to have the neighbor because of a little ash. And so it was just, oh, look, it's out of my house. But they weren't thinking about, and they weren't flicked, they were just dumped. So I think bonfires for the school are great. I'm hoping it rains like crazy. I hope they can have it and I'm happy to rescind it on the 21st immediately if we can. So let's just finish the process so we can go home and get some sleep. Okay. Motion on the approval on the amendment, vote?
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Why not? Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cor, Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes. I know taxpayer money.
Motion to amend passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, can we, can we vote on the motion as amended with all due respect to every other school district in Northampton County?
Groovy. I call.
Call for the vote.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss?
I think the only new business is this weekend's Veterans Day. And, well, this Monday, but Saturday, you know, Sunday's a Marine Corps birthday, which is the most important one. But anyway, Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans, all active service and inactive service and everybody else. I don't know if anybody's a veteran up here besides myself, but I just wanted to say that. That's new business, old business.
Thank you.
You should know this. I think you've built it in, 1775.
Are there any county council committee reports? No?
Yeah, we had a economic development committee meeting where we discussed the LVPC budget. Give me a second so I can get the organization's name right.